Okay. Good evening, everyone, and thank you for joining us for our study session with the Planning Commission. I'm going to start by going around the room so everyone can introduce themselves since we have so many people here at the table. I'm Lisa Gilmore, Mayor.
Teresa O'Neil, Councilmember.
Karen Hardy, Councilmember.
Pat Mayhan, Councilmember.
Deanna Santana, City Manager.
Manuel Pineda, Assistant City Manager.
Brian Doyle, City Attorney.
Anthony Becker, Planning Commissioner.
Nancy Biagini, Planning Commission.
Priya Chiruk, Planning Commissioner.
Yuki Casey, Planning Commissioner.
Suds Jane, Planning Commissioner.
Steve Kelly, Planning Commissioner.
Lance Lane, Planning Commissioner.
Jonathan Beach, Housing Manager.
Andrew Crabtree, Director of Community Development.
Rena Brio, Planning Manager.
John Davidson with the Planning Division.
Raj Chahal, Councilmember.
Kathy Watanabe, Councilmember.
Last but not least, Debbie Davis, Councilmember.
Thank you. Thank you all for joining us this evening, and we're now going to move into our study on zoning code comprehensive update, safe parking, assisted living, and continuation of our August 20th study session topics. City Manager?
This continues our joint session series where we're looking for input around the zoning code update. We have some topics that have been noted on your agenda. I want to thank the Planning Commission and the City Council for taking the opportunity to meet in this manner. I do also want to note that just for room setup, we'll have our typical end time so that we can have a six o'clock start time for a council meeting?
Yes, 6:45, correct? Okay, thank you.
5:45.
I mean 5:45.
Yes, thank you, Mayor.
All right. Thank you, Mayor, members of the City Council, Planning Commission. As just mentioned, this is a joint study session of the City Council and Planning Commission, which we're conducting as part of our comprehensive update of the zoning code. The zoning code was last comprehensively updated in 1969, and so there are a large number of issues that we are addressing through the zoning code update, including topics where the code currently doesn't really address them at all, as well as topics where there's a real need to modernize and add more detail around what the code says. So the two topics that we have to discuss tonight fit into these two categories. The first, safe parking, is not currently addressed in the code. And then assisted living and sort of the different types of senior housing that are out there are somewhat addressed in the code, but there's definitely a need for greater clarity and modernization of the terms in the code. So tonight, we'll be providing information on how we might address these two topics in the zoning code update, and we'll be seeking input from both the City Council and Planning Commission on those proposals. Should note that this is the second of three study sessions we're conducting this summer fall, heading towards the completion of the update process, and we have another one coming up on October 8th that will specifically be used to address short-term rentals and the criteria for occupancy limits in single-family residential districts. We won't be talking about those two topics tonight. Tonight is really focused on safe parking and assisted living. So the first question you might ask is, what is safe parking? Safe parking programs are programs run where there's a place provided for people to park vehicles overnight that they're residing in or sleeping in overnight. So typically, it would be like a recreational vehicle or a pickup truck with a camper, something like that. Typically, in these programs, a large parking lot is identified somewhere, and a program is put in place to allow people to park in those lots overnight for sleeping purposes. Typically, you see nonprofits operating and administering these programs, but there can be some government, local jurisdiction oversight and participation in administration of the program. The goal is to really provide a safe place for people to live. It's intended to be a short-term solution, sort of transitional until people can find other housing solutions, not meant to be a sort of a permanent place for people to reside. Commonly, you'll see it, church parking lots being used for this purpose. There's a few examples around here where that's in the case, Mountain View, Palo Alto, San Jose in some cases. There also, you'll see it sometimes on like a public lot. San Jose is operating one at a community center, for example. And then the funding for these programs can range considerably, sort of for $55,000 to $360,000 for 20 to 30 spaces. And it really depends on how much reliance there is upon nonprofits and volunteers to provide the services that are involved. Part of the question is, why is this of concern? This is data from the point-in-time homeless census that is conducted countywide every two years. All of the different jurisdictions in the county cooperate to go out in a single day and conduct a census of the homeless population. And one thing that we very notably observed from 2017 to 2019 is countywide and in Santa Clara, an increase in the unsheltered population. Unsheltered population does include people living in vehicles. So you can see for Santa Clara, went from 199 to 264 people, a 20% increase. Countywide, there was a 31% increase in the unsheltered population. So some information about a safe parking program. There's a fair amount of administration that goes into these. There's typically application process for people who would like to participate. You know, income qualification, possession of a driver's license since they are driving a vehicle. Different requirements like that go into the initial application process. There are rules. Time limits are common that someone needs to be on the site by a certain time and then leave the site, like 7:00 PM. They need to be on the site, leave by 7:00 AM, something along those lines. Certainly, you know, rules about behavior, you know, can't have like outdoor cooking and different things like that can be regulated. There's generally a reliance upon nonprofits to provide services, or county agencies that already provide services to these types of populations. So, you know, if a city takes this on, they don't attempt to provide services as a new activity, but really rely on other entities. And particularly, we want to be clear that, you know, as we look at what's potential in front of us in Santa Clara, that, you know, we're not proposing to take on new programs that would be run by the city. Really, we're looking at what, from a regulatory standpoint, might be necessary to support these types of uses for a nonprofit. Access to bathroom facilities, either, you know, a host building that has facilities that might be made available to people, or bringing in porta-potties, something that's typical. There's a need for waste management, taking away trash and so forth, and access to water and other things can be an important part of the services that are provided. There's, of course, a regulatory context that applies here. And I mentioned at this point, too, that as cities look at providing these safe parking facilities or enabling them, they also are looking at regulations typically on the on-street parking of large vehicles. And so, as probably most of you are aware, you know, under state law, there's a 72-hour provision that allows someone to park a vehicle for 72 hours on a public street. But if it's extended over 72 hours, and the vehicle can be considered to be abandoned, and the local jurisdiction can deal with it. There's also provisions that allow for bans on parking during certain times of the night and so forth. So there are some tools that are available locally. It's interesting to note that there are two assembly bills in the, early in the process. They haven't been, you know, brought forward for a vote yet, but there are two that are looking at this issue that could have some impact on us. The first, maybe not so much because it's really focused on cities with a population of 330,000 or more, and it would require those larger cities to provide some kind of safe parking program. San Jose, you know, the local city that would meet this criteria already has some programs in place. And then the second, which could have more of an impact upon us, if it goes forward, would require community college campuses to provide access to parking facilities, recognizing that there are students often enrolled in community colleges that are homeless and need a place to live. Just some examples from Santa Clara, where, and this is from this morning, you can see that there are, you know, RVs parked on the streets. They're typically in our industrial areas. We have one on Bassett here, and then another example from Agnew Drive. So, you know, this is going on in the community. We do occasionally receive complaints from some of our industrial property owners about these vehicles parked in their neighborhoods. We don't have the same degree of visibility, say, Mountain View, where you go up and down El Camino Real, and you can see a lot of the RVs parked along El Camino Real. So as mentioned earlier, provisions, regulations to allow safe parking are often considered in combination with overnight vehicle parking bans. This issue has been addressed a lot in Mountain View of note recently. They've been working on this for about three years through a series of public hearings, and really, it's a combination of the two issues at the same time. There are people who are concerned about, from a compassionate standpoint, about providing housing in this form for the community as a need, recognizing that, you know, often these are people who work in the community and don't have access to housing otherwise. At the same time, there's a need to deal with the impacts that can occur from having the vehicles on the street. So they are often looked at in combination. And Mountain View, they've been working through this process. They had a hearing on June 11th, and they, we expect that they'll come back this fall with some ordinance that moves forward, a prohibition on overnight parking of large-sized vehicles, or based on the size so that it would capture RVs. There are some provisions in the ordinance, for example, for homeowners to get a permit to sort of temporarily park an RV on the street in front of their home. So they've worked through a lot of the details of that, and they're getting close, we think, to adoption of some kind of ban. They're also looking at moving forward with a program for safe parking that relies on a combination of churches and public lots primarily, but also they're trying to work with some of the commercial landowners as well. But really, they're looking at providing somewhere in the neighborhood of 60 spaces in total that would be addressed through safe parking while they have several hundred RVs typically parked on the street. So on this issue, some possible council actions to consider as part of our zoning code update. In our code today, the conditional use permit process is very flexible in terms of what it can be used to address. So that is a process that is available. However, it comes with some cost. You know, it's over $10,000 to go through a conditional use permit process. So if we do have a church locally that's interested in providing a safe parking facility, that could be a barrier to that church for moving forward. So as an alternative, we could look at adding into our zoning code some administrative process. We see that in Mountain View, for example. And then they build into that restrictions, regulations that try to address the impacts that come along with that, but really having a streamlined process for someone to go forward on nonprofit, or even potentially commercial property, to offer that kind of facility on their site. On the regulatory side of the on-street parking, you know, we could continue to maintain the current regulations that we have, or we look at adding restrictions for specific areas, or a citywide restriction, which is what Mountain View is really contemplating that they would do. So with that, I'll transition to the next topic that we have for tonight. It's really a different topic here, and that's dealing with different categories of, we might call assisted living or senior housing. And we're going to talk through five different types of facilities. I just want to be clear that we're talking about facilities that have more than six residents. There is a legal provision that if it's six or fewer people, it's sort of addressed as a single-family home, and you'll often see them integrate into neighborhoods. So these are the five different categories we're going to walk through that we're proposing to be addressed in our zoning code. And in working through this, you know, we're looking at legal definitions are out there, looking at how the industry describes these different uses, and trying to provide clarity in our code. This is sort of increasingly an issue that we're seeing at the moment. You know, there's a demand out there for these types of facilities, so developers are coming in and proposing them, and it would be helpful to have, for all of us, to have a little more clarity as to what our zoning code allows and in what locations. So these different types of uses are primarily defined in terms of daily living activities that, and what services are provided around those, include bathing, dressing, taking medications, being mobile, and eating. Those are sort of the criteria that I use to differentiate these different types of living facilities. So the first one is basically age-restricted housing. It's market-rate housing that has an age restriction. Under state law, you know, a developer can build housing and restrict the age of the individuals who live there to 55 or 62, and basically saying, you know, this is a senior housing facility restricted this way. It doesn't include any services. It's not licensed by the state. It's really just a marketing decision on how the housing is being developed and marketed. The second category is, or type, is service-based senior living. This one, we're sort of walking through the spectrum for them, from the most residential to what you might say are the most commercial or institutional uses. So this is still on the residential side, but they're starting to provide some services for seniors that include, you know, there's a kitchen available. When you buy your unit or rent your unit, meals are included. But typically, residents are still able to care for themselves. They're independent. This is not a state-licensed facility. It's just different than housing that's sort of the base case where it's just housing, but it has an age restriction. This is housing that might be marketed as, you know, as independent living facility or some way by the developer because they are providing some additional services. So the next category, which we are labeling as assisted living, is a combination of housing with supportive services and health-related care provided. So this is for individuals that do require some assistance or help with their activities of daily living, and it is distinguished from the prior category in that it is now a licensed type of use through the California Department of Social Services, recognizing that these are facilities that there's some need for oversight to make sure that they're providing these services in an appropriate way because the individual living there may not be able to do everything on their own. And then moving into what start to have more of a commercial character, we have skilled nursing facilities, and these are our facilities where there is 24-hour medical nursing care on-site for people who either have ongoing chronic or short-term needs, medical needs for assistance. And so you'll see a much higher degree of support provided to residents in this type of facility. And this is licensed through the Department of Public Health. So it's sort of recognizing that we're getting more into the realm of a medical-type facility. And then the final category is community care facilities. These combine multiple services, and you'll see these developments where, you know, they want to provide a range, a spectrum of care so that residents, you know, as they need different types of services, can stay within the same development. They might move around from the units based on the level of need that they have. But again, it's sort of a business decision to provide this type of facility, recognizing that there's a demand. Someone might be attracted to move into a place where they can live somewhat independently, but over time, if they need greater care, then they can stay in the same facility and have access to that care. So we're really proposing to add into the zoning code these definitions, which we think will be helpful as we work through and people come in and propose some type of development. We can be clear that it's permitted and in what zoning districts where it's allowed. Our current code says nursing, uses the term nursing homes, and they're only identified as being allowed in the administrative office district, so it's kind of a deficiency because there's obviously a lot of other places where they might be appropriate. There are fewer than 50 parcels zoned OA within, in our city. And so, and most of those are along Scott Boulevard, Winchester Boulevard, and Saratoga Avenue. So we're trying to really, through this effort, provide more flexibility and more opportunities for where this type of development can occur. So just to kind of summarize what we're proposing, we're aligning with state licensing language in our code. So we're using, where the state licensing really says it's an institutional use, we're also using that also using that as the basis for where the use would be appropriate from a land use standpoint. We're proposing to treat age-restricted housing, which is the category that doesn't include any services, really the same as non-age-restricted housing. It's very similar in the way it's developed. We would propose to allow service-based senior living by right in medium-density residential and also in commercial districts, recognizing that it's kind of crossing over that boundary from residential to a commercial character. Allowing assisted living and skilled nursing facilities through a conditional use permit in public, quasi-public, or commercial districts, again reflecting that they have both sort of a commercial and institutional character in those facilities that are more heavily provided with services. And then proposal is to treat continuing care communities, which are the mixed-use ones, the same as assisted living facilities. So with that concludes our presentation, and we're available to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Director Crabtree.
As well as take your input.
Crabtree, thank you very much. I'm going to start with the council. Councilmember Hardy?
Question.
It's turned, when it turns green, it's opposite of up there.
Oh, it's green as on?
Yes, opposite.
All right. So I want to make certain I understand on the, on the senior housing, we have a bunch of facilities, and you're saying we have not updated our code to recognize how any of these are different.
Right. Our code has not been updated around to include modern terms. It's very restrictive if you apply it as it's written today.
Have you reached out to the facilities we already have here in town? Would there be any negative effect to the ones that are already here?
So this would be applicable mostly to new construction. We did reach out to the industry and talked to a couple developers who are actively developing different spectrums of assisted living, and they provided really a lot of information that fed into this presentation.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember O'Neil?
Yes, thank you. So I really want to thank the staff for bringing the topic of the safe parking, because I have been in conversation with various, the city manager and other members of her staff and the city attorney's office about this for probably off and on for close to a year. And I think we acknowledge, or most, all of us acknowledge that there are issues, and it may not be as visible as Director Crabtree pointed out. If you go to, you know, Palo Alto and El Camino, or Rengst, or some of those places, East Palo Alto, where there are large stretches. But I think that we've all kind of seen, you know, where people are staking out their spots, and a lot of them are working, or I've encountered a few, you know, that are seniors that are living, you know, that's where they're living. But I hope that we can have, you know, at this point, I mean, I know there's a whole range of issues that related to the homeless and those who are inappropriately housed, unhoused, whatever word you want to use, just the pressure of what's going on. And, you know, and you mentioned the community college statistics. If you talk to people from Bill Wilson Center, it's scary how many kids that are even at the high school level that are couch surfing, that are doing all that. I know back in the days when I was on the board of the AIDS Coalition, that they're, one of the populations that we were serving, helping to provide services for were teenagers that, you know, been kicked out of their homes for one reason or another. So at least to look at this segment of the issue and realizing that we have a whole nother bunch of issues that, and Jonathan Beach is here and his group, and, you know, I have a lot of ideas about what maybe we could do under the Community Services and Housing Division. But, so one of my thoughts would be, and I know, and I don't see him here yet, but Pastor Clark Moore from Hope Lutheran, he did tell me that he was going to, he had another commitment this afternoon. He's one of the faith-based communities that I've been talking to. I know mine has indicated something, because I think a lot of people are doing things kind of informally. They may have a few people staying, and then they've kind of have a deal, like, okay, you've got to get up and get going by seven o'clock, or whatever, like, but to look at, you know, maybe we could do a combination of things strictly focused on this, like to look and see, you know, is there a portion of us, you know, like a corporation yard or something, or someplace where we might be able to provide those facilities? Because I think where a lot of the problems come up is if we are not, you know, allowing for people to have restroom and bathing and laundry facilities, and that's where the problems come up. And I know that there's other people who have brought up, and, you know, some of us are familiar with a group called Dignity on Wheels, where they will come in with a, they have a trailer, a modified vehicle, and they have showers, and they have built-in laundry facility there where people can do a load of wash, and, you know, things like that. But, you know, like, if, you know, so if there could be some flexibility within, say, the conditional use permits for some organizations in combination with, is there, and I know land is short everywhere, but is there a city property that might be an appropriate use, where we can make sure that you've got some of these other services? Because I think, as I said, not to repeat myself, but I think that that's where you get more anxiety, either from a business owner, or when people are parking in residential neighborhoods, if those other needs, you know, basic sanitary needs are not being addressed. So I, we've got to kind of look at that a little bit in tandem.
Thank you. Councilmember Davis, and then Watanabe after that.
Andrew, when you brought up the AB 891, it's requiring counties and cities with a population greater than 300,000, where our county is definitely way over 330,000. So do we have a plan already in place to establish a safe parking area in lieu of this being passed by legislation?
So that would apply to the county as a, you know, county agency. So it's not, the city is not directly affected, right? It's the county, if it's over that population within their county part, they have to provide it. So, but to answer your question, we don't currently have a proposal for the City of Santa Clara to provide a safe parking program. But we don't think this Assembly Bill either would, at least as it's currently drafted, requires Santa Clara, the city, to do something.
Right, but I would select Plan B, because if it does come down the pike, I want to be ready for this one, just in case, because the possibility of that happening will. The other question with the overnight parking and the ban that Mountain View went through, and we do have some RVs, and I think they're out in Kathy's District, where are they dumping their wastewater and what is happening? Because is that going into our sewer system? Because if they're living in RVs, where is this water going?
That is one of the concerns, and we have them around the city in different industrial areas, and we do sometimes receive complaints about that kind of dumping activities.
Okay, because that's a big no-no and bad. And then the other thing, okay, on the assisted living part, and I know that we do have some spaces right now that are 55 and plus, and you brought up two, three areas, so Scott Boulevard, Winchester, and Saratoga. If we're going to streamline this, I would hope that the core services that these people all need would be there, because the biggest complaint that I hear in the north side from some people is they don't have a drugstore within a walkability. So when we approve a lot of these projects, they look for, how can they walk across the street, and what are the amenities that need? So we already did Agrohood. We approved the one that's going on, El Camino Real, Summer Hill, and that should be coming down the pike. But all of the necessity needs of the people, the seniors, isn't within a walkability thing for them. And so I'm looking at, can we make it much easier when we talk to developers that want to bring in this because of the silver tsunami coming? That they, if we have the guidelines, kind of like when you asked us about the north side guidelines, I think when we go into a senior guideline to make the streamlining much easier for them and the locations, so that if these amenities are already there, or you say that, you know, we would like to have this included in this, it would make it easier for us to look at the development and say, this is a good fit. So that's my thing on that one. And I think, the other thing is, can you give us a list of these 50 parcels that you zoned, where they're located?
A lot of the professional offices, like all the dentists and doctors offices.
Yeah, I would like to know, like, what is, what is out there for these people?
And those are, those are existing ones that have been zoned up.
Like, what is that, and where is that?
Okay.
Thank you.
Councilmember Watanabe?
Thank you, Mayor. My biggest concern is, and discussion is going to be regarding the safe parking, and I'm happy to see we've got a couple of residents from the north side here tonight. This has definitely become a big issue in the north side, and I know I've had conversations with Assistant Chief Winter in the past, and the fire, the police department has been, you know, very responsive in terms of addressing the RV, the oversized vehicle parking. You do have a picture right here on Agnew where they do park a lot, and on a given day, there's easily nine, nine vehicles usually parked out there. It's Slide 7. And also, Hope Drive has become a very popular place, and now I've been receiving concerns from residents up on Calle de Primavera, near Catherine Hughes. They seem to be moving around. So this is really coming at a really critical time, and, you know, we understand. I mean, there's a need out there right now, and, you know, we want to make sure that, you know, we treat everybody as humanely and give them opportunities to be in a safe place. What I would like to know is, do you have a timeline? Does the planning department have a timeline as to when you think you might be able to be coming to council for a vote regarding this ordinance?
Well, our intent in doing this as part of the comprehensive zoning code update is to allow us to bring it forward sooner than we would otherwise, and I think February at this point is our target date for the council to consider that.
Right, okay. And also, West Valley Mission College, I don't know if I've talked to you about this, but West Valley, West Valley right now does have a program where they're actually, I understand they're working with 11 other, or maybe it's 11 altogether, 11 different outfits altogether, where they're rotating people, being able to have safe parking and also providing services, you know, sanitary services, and I believe there's one other thing that they offer, but, you know, but it is, they're providing the safe parking. And also, I understand that now the new chancellor is looking at Mission College as also being an option. He actually reached out to me today and wants to sit down and talk about it. And maybe when that happens, maybe y'all might like to come along with me. But the, but it's nice to know that, you know, that they're exploring the issue here in Santa Clara. The, let me see, there was, oh, in terms of, you know, homeless and, you know, the options, I know Home First is actually, I think they're getting more engaged in terms of providing services. I was at their shelter in Sunnyvale recently, where they are actually looking at having the ability to, you know, people like with medical needs, like when they come out of hospital, having a place to stay, because right now they sleep on mats. It's a facility for about 150 people, and they sleep on the floor.
Councilmember Watanabe, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but we only have a few more minutes, so can you just ask the questions?
Oh, sure, sure, sure.
So we can get to the planning commission as well? I apologize for interrupting you.
Well, sure, okay. No problem. So anyway, thank you for bringing this forward, and, you know, whatever we can do, I know there are residents out there that have concerns, and just glad that we're moving this forward, because it's definitely a big need in the whole Bay Area. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Chahal?
Yeah, I'll be brief. Thank you. Thank you for the report. I have only two points to make. One is the waiving off the permit fees for the nonprofits. If we are putting that thing, that should be put on the zoning code. And the next one is coordinating with the regional, because this is not a local issue, it's a regional issue, how we can facilitate coordinating with other cities and the county. Is there a unified body which can help us define these things and elevate all these things? And next one, there was an email from Commissioner Jane about the municipal IDs, like they're facing that, how we can work on with the county or the municipal IDs. I don't want it to be Santa Clara only, because then you have more influx into the Santa Clara. Everybody can come to Santa Clara, get the IDs, but we should think about it, if we can coordinate this thing with our neighbors, and at the county level, we can have something like that. Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to remind everyone, we're just talking about our zoning code update. I know we're all talking about regional issues and things we want to do, but if we could just focus on our zoning code update. And I'm going to turn it over to the planning commission. Oh, Vice Mayor Mahan, did you have any comments? Okay, planning commission.
Okay. Commissioner Regina?
A couple of questions on safe parking. I know this issue had come up in my neighborhood some years back, where it was an oversized RV parked on the city street, and then using the Warburton Swim Center for the bathing and all that kind of stuff. So when you talk about adding restrictions for overnight parking of, for overnight parking of oversized vehicles, you're talking about that sort of thing?
Yes. Basically not, the concept is that cities are looking at like not allowing RVs to park overnight.
To park on the street, neighborhood streets.
On neighborhood streets, or city, on any street, industrial areas, et cetera.
Got you. Go to the, go to the places designated as such?
Right.
And then those, whatever places end up designated, be it a church, or community college, and what have you, is there going to be a minimum or maximum number of slots available for this? Is that the thought process?
Typically, there are like certain square footage per RV requirements, because they have to have a certain amount of separation, and there can be also a cap on the total number on a site. Although it's, often the parking lots aren't that able to handle that many more, because there is a need for, you know, a certain amount of buffer around each one.
Right, which is where I'm thinking smaller places, it's not going to work too good. And then I'm just kind of curious, the nursing homes under the current zoning regulations, is that sort of analogous to assisted living spots? Is that kind of what we're talking about when we say that nursing, what's, what's the comparable?
So, so part of the challenge is that terms like assisted living can be used a lot of different ways in the industry.
Okay.
So, so we're trying to move away to, from those terms, the ones that are, have a clear definition. So a nursing home, or we're really trying to distinguish between places that have medical services provided on-site, that are regulated by the state, versus ones where they just provide some services.
I'm pretty familiar with the different types. So, okay, instead of just having this broad nursing homes definition, narrow it down to one of those five types.
Right.
Okay, thanks.
Commissioner Jane?
Yeah, I was wondering what type of advice you were trying to get regarding the ADLs. As you do this zoning, I would like for us to define for each of these zoning areas, the parking ratios, the amount of common space provided, the densities of these facilities, how much affordable housing would be there, and some form of exercise facilities within each of these. And then in terms of the homeless, I was listening to a KQD episode, and they talked about, for homeless, there is no medicine as powerful as housing. So that struck me as being very apt, considering how much we spend on medical support for them. I fully agree with Councilman, Councilmember O'Neil, that this should be a holistic approach. We should look at lockers for them to store safely their IDs and their social security numbers and all of that. We should look at laundry. We should look at the showers. We should look at, I agree, I didn't see in the document any income screen, but I know Director Crabtree did mention that. And then time limits, how long can they stay in these facilities? How many months will we allow them, because there's a shortage? I know Mountain View has a plan for disposing of blackwater, so I think that should be a holistic approach. Thank you.
Commissioner Slame, then Commissioner Chiracu, and then Commissioner Kelly.
Okay, so I had about half a dozen questions, but I'm going to abandon them all in favor of a single request, that when we do these sessions in the future, we could actually provide a productive amount of Q and A time. So a lot of these questions that are being rushed and abandoned could actually be addressed, so.
I appreciate that, but we have a 45-minute session, and we have 30 minutes of reports, and it only leaves us 15 minutes, so it's duly noted. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Chiracu?
I just wanted to make some recommendations. Overnight only, it's pretty limited. People work night shifts that are still in cars, especially those who work night shifts, so consideration of daytime. Some of the ordinance where we identify city lots would be like city parking lot, our parking lot across our transit area. parking lot across our transit area. VTA park and ride lots could be, so those would be what I would recommend in ordinance identified sites. Know that if it is an operation managed by either a nonprofit, it's going to require playground areas for kids, dog park, you know, definitely resources and management of those. I work extensively in this with Bill Wilson, Home First, I understand. So, there's a distinction between a shelter, which is what Commissioner Sads and especially where teens can go, but there's a difference in safe parking where I don't want to be known as homeless. So just some thoughts to consider as ordinance requirements. I would suggest that this kind of joint session, if it's possible, to bring to planning commission, so we have an extended discussion and we can actually forward recommendations to city council, as opposed to us, you know, giving our feedback in just one go.
Commissioner Kelly.
All right. I had a couple of questions for planning staff. For the community college, quite frankly, I think micro units might be a better option than having utility vehicles, campers, RVs, because most of the college students can't get around without a car. I would like to see no parking requirements if they go with like micro units. I'd also like to see some of these large employers be allowed to designate areas at their campuses for RV parking and allow them to have the proper hookups for RVs. And then, I'd like to see the city issue permits for these people in these RVs, so we know who they are. And that way, if churches and other organizations want to allow them to park on certain parking areas, we know who they are and they have designated facilities. Because I think the big fear for the community is, a lot of these people, they don't know who they are and where they're coming from.
Commissioner Kessi.
Quick question about the safe parking. We talked about churches, city land. Are there any considerations about private properties, as Commissioner Kelly mentioned? I see a lot of workers who work for small businesses parking their camping, camping car on the parking lot. So it's, people are already doing this. And I don't know if the city is just ignoring them, but, you know, is there a consideration to formalize something like that? And what about like driveways? I mean, a lot, we have a lot of driveways in our city. And I know a lot of people have bath facilities in their garage, so, you know, is that something that we could consider if our housing situation is going to get even worse than today, so.
Okay. And I'd like to chime in on saying that I like what Kathy Watanabe said, which was Mission College, definitely an area because it's a very big issue amongst college students is homelessness, because it's so hard to afford to live around here. Also, city property, I agree, that is a very good option. Empty business parking lots, I see a lot of empty businesses here, and we also have security that does patrol those, so that would be a good option. And also, I agree with Councilmember Davis on where are they dumping? That is a major concern to me as well. And then lastly, I see as old motels around here, it's an option for possible homeless situation solving for transitional housing. And I agree with Councilmember, sorry, Commissioner Slame, that we do need more time for this. We are volunteering our time and it's really hard to get here, especially on time.
Thank you for that, planning commission. I'm going to go to the public. Is there any member of the public that would like to speak? And if so, if you could come forward and could we please give a microphone, or do we have one set up for the public member? Sorry if you could hold it. Apologize for the awkwardness of it. Thank you, Priya.
Yeah, thank you. Hi Kathy. I have a couple of questions. If you have overnight lots, where are they supposed to go in the daytime? If they are having to leave at six or seven or whatever in the morning, where are they supposed to park then? Won't we still have the problem? They have to go somewhere. And a lot of these, just to emphasize that we talk about RVs, there are a lot of these people that are in actual just regular vans and, and cars. So, I'm not sure some of that's going to be addressed. Anyway, but, yeah, I think that they have to go somewhere at all times. And if you made a little bit more of a community, that might help for safety also.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Would anyone else like to make some comments? Please come forward. Oh, you have them handheld, very good.
I got lucky.
Yay, thank you. Thank you.
So Kathy, just the rotating service that you talked about in the West Valley, I'm the co-founder for that and the program director. And yes, we're meeting with Mission College this month. This has been a very successful program for us, and we started a path almost two years ago. So my question is how, as a longtime resident to Santa Clara, even though I was working with Saratoga, who also has city ordinances changes that we worked out with them, how we can influence your ordinance or the recommendations for your ordinance and your permits? Because the key to this, the key to make that work, first of all, is lower cost, is the ordinance and how friendly they are. And I think, I would like to see if we can at least answer some of your questions and concerns, but more importantly, make recommendations, so the ordinance would be friendly, easier for the people who want to do this. Okay? Who can I contact?
Certainly be happy to take your input and follow up after this meeting.
And I could also give you the gentleman that we partnered with in the government, the city manager of Saratoga. And so he's where I started almost a year and a half ago. And he has a copy of our administrative guidelines, the agreements and the ordinances changes, so that might help you as well. Okay? So, can I, do I work with you?
Yeah, I'll follow up with you after this.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for your comments, because we will look for any kind of help we can when we look to form our own and maybe answer some of those questions as a resident just brought up about where do the, where do they go during the day?
And I'm a longtime resident of Santa Clara, so it's really good.
Oh, then you get extra points for that, so, very good. Thank you.
Longtime resident, that's where we started.
Yes.
Because there's an opportunity there, so I'm really glad you guys are doing this.
It's just not an issue from San, for Santa Clara, it's surrounding cities as well, so if we can work with each other to come up with the best solution, I think, and help each other, it's really important. So thank you very much.
And also, for your interest, Campbell is currently negotiating with a collection of collaborative that we've spun up.
I think we should talk to Campbell as well.
Campbell?
Thank you.
There you go.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? Okay, seeing none, then closing comment, Councilmember Hardy.
Yes. I was remembering that I was approached by my church probably about six months ago thinking about this, but the minute, the minute there were any requirements, they said they couldn't do it. When you, the more requirements you put on something, the less likely it is to happen. And church parking lots do have the problem with crime already happening at night. And we found by having one person who lived back there who was a member of our church, it actually helped the situation. But when there was more than one, there were problems.
Thank you for that. Anyways, thank you, Community Development Director and everyone, staff, city manager, city attorney, planning commission. We will hopefully allow more time at our next study session. It's, that was very, it was very apparent that we needed a lot more time. But thank you very much. We are now going to adjourn shortly for the next 10 minutes or so, if we can do that, and then we will open the council meeting. Thank you.
Good evening, and I'm calling this special meeting to order. Could you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for our Statement of Values?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As we gather, we humbly seek blessings upon this meeting. May we act with strength, courage, and will to perform our obligation and duties to our people with justice to all. Let us seek wisdom so that we may act in the best interest of our people, our neighbors, and our country. All this we ask so we may serve our community with fairness and respect, putting their needs before all.
Thank you. Please be seated. Assistant City Clerk, roll call.
Councilmember Mahon. Councilmember Hardy. Councilmember O'Neal.
Here.
Councilmember Davis. Councilmember Watanabe. Councilmember Shahal.
Here.
And Mayor Gilmore.
Here.
Thank you.
I understand Councilmember Hardy is going to come back later in the meeting. If she does not, then we can excuse her. Assistant City Clerk, do you have your message you want to read?
AB 23 announcement. Members of the Santa Clara Stadium Authority, Sports and Open Space Authority, and Housing Authority are entitled to receive $30 for each attended meeting. Statement of Behavioral Standards. The City of Santa Clara has adopted a code of ethics and values and behavioral standards for public meetings to promote and maintain the highest levels of conduct. This includes mutual respect, robust discussion, and allowing city business to be done in an efficient and consistent manner. Please note that as the presiding officer, the mayor's direction in matters of process and decorum should be followed, and that use of the gavel indicates all conversations must conclude, and everyone in attendance should come to order and attention. Welcome and thank you for your participation.
Thank you. I'd like to call out a special moment of silence before we start the council meeting. The city council and I would like to offer our heartfelt condolences to the families, the friends, and of the individuals who tragically lost their lives from the mass shooting event on August 31st in Odessa, Texas. Our hearts and prayers are with the victims, the injured, and their families. So if you could please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you very much for that. We're going to move on with reports of action taken in closed session. City Attorney?
Yes, council took no reportable action in closed session.
Thank you. Any continuances or exceptions, city manager, city council, member of the public? Okay, seeing none. The next item we have on our agenda is our Special Order of Business, the Proclamation of September 2019 as Community Preparedness Month. So as a Special Order of Business this evening, I would like to announce that the month of September is Community Preparedness Month in Santa Clara. FEMA has set the theme for the 2019 National Preparedness Month as Prepared, Not Scared, Be Ready for Disasters. Given the geographic location of our city, we are susceptible to natural disasters, including earthquakes, floods, and other large-scale emergencies. As such, we strive to prepare our families for the unpredicted and take great pride in supporting the National Preparedness Campaign. At this time, I'd like to invite Emergency Services Coordinator Lisa Schoenthall up to the podium. Thank you, Lisa, for coming this evening.
Thank you very much, Mayor Gilmore, and members of the council. For the record, I am Lisa Schoenthall, the city's Emergency Services Coordinator. Thank you especially for this proclamation and for emphasizing the importance of emergency preparedness. The city's communications team will be messaging emergency preparedness information throughout the month, so we look forward to that. And at this time, I would like to invite our Office of Emergency Services Director, Deanna Santana, and our Fire Chief, Ruben Torres, to join us to receive the proclamation and for the photo opportunity.
Thank you. If you'd like to come forward here, and I'd like to ask the council if we could please come down so that we can present this proclamation. You've really upped our game here in Santa Clara. We all had the chance to tour our facilities and look at our emergency plans, and you've really taken it up to a really great level for our residents. So we're very, very pleased with all the hard work that you've put into it. So thank you, thank you very much for all of that. Okay, our next item on the agenda is the Consent Calendar. All items are approved with one motion unless a member of the council staff or public would like to pull an item.
Move approval of the Consent Calendar.
Motion and a second to approve. Anyone like to pull an item from the council, staff, public? Would anyone like to pull an item? Okay, there's a motion and a second. Are you waiting for Councilmember O'Neal? Did you register your vote?
I didn't.
Is that a yes, Councilmember O'Neal?
I didn't get a...
Okay, she didn't get it. Is that a yes?
Yes, but I didn't get a block.
And that passes unanimously. Those on the dais, thank you for that. All right, our next order of business is Public Presentations. These are presentations made for any items that are not on the agenda. City Clerk, Assistant City Clerk, do we have any cards? Yes, Jerry Patrick Anani, please come forward. Welcome, sir.
Good evening, councilors, mayor. I'm the spokesperson for Santa Clara Lawn Bowls Club, and I was looking over this agenda. You each have a copy of it. It was created or brought to your attention in December last year, and I'm reading it and I'm thinking, where's the follow-up on all of the questions that arise from this report? Did I miss them, or they're not written down, or how do I, how do we continue with this is what I want to do? So that's all I'm here for, is what's the follow-up? How do we do the follow-up?
Okay, thank you. I don't know. City Manager, are you prepared to talk about this?
I will just note that staff did direct for, the council did direct for staff to return with additional information, and I will ask Assistant City Manager Manuel Pena to just to talk with the gentleman in terms of next steps and what anticipated timeframe we would come back.
And maybe you can let us know as well when this is coming back. It will be back, so, thank you.
Yeah, it's not going to go away. Thank you.
But we appreciate you bringing this again to our attention. Thank you, Mr. Patrick Anani. Anyone else like to come up and talk about anything that's not on the agenda? Please come forward. Okay, seeing none. Our next item is, let's see, Action on the City's Response to the 2018-19 Santa Clara County Civil Grand Jury Report entitled "City of Santa Clara: Public Records Access: The Paper Chase." Sounds like a TV show. All right. City Manager.
I'm hoping for the PowerPoint to be brought up. There it is. So this is the city's response to the Santa Clara County's grand jury investigation report related to the public records access. The report resulted from a resident complaint about the City of Santa Clara and Santa Clara Stadium Authority contract procedures. I do want to mention that during the grand jury exit interview on May 28th, where several staff were in attendance, we learned that there was no wrongdoing with the contract procedures, but it did cause for a change based on trying to acquire documents from the city in terms of scope of the investigation, which the grand jury released to us that it was going to be a report based on the handling of request of records under the California Public Records Act. The grand jury published a report on June 18th, 2019. Mayor, you read the title, and included in that report were four findings and six recommendations. According to the state code, the city must respond within 90 days, and that's September 16th. And if council approves this report, it fulfills the 90-day response requirement. We will put a cover letter on top of it, attach report, and have the mayor sign the letter so that we can forward it. So I want to hand the rest, the two next slides over to the city attorney to go through the flowchart of the CPRA and a request.
This is just a very brief overview of the obligations when you receive a public records request under state law. The first thing you do is you try to determine what is the actual request. Sometimes that's not very easy, and sometimes you just don't have a record that's directly responsible for the request. But in any event, you determine whether you have responsive records or not. If the answer is yes, you have 10 days to provide an initial response. If you can properly provide the response, if the record is readily available, then you just give the person the record. A lot of the records requests that we get, though, require us to go searching through records, and within that 10 days, we will determine if we have records or if we have to use more time to get records. And in that case, we will inform the requester that there is an extension necessary. There's a statutory, certain requirements in order to invoke the 14-day extension, and those are listed there. Oftentimes, it has to do with the volume of records and where they're kept and the condition in which they're kept. And, yeah, you know, I mean, we can only do what we can do, and oftentimes, it takes a while to find the records and to search through them and process them to make sure they're responsive and to make sure they're not prohibited from exemption, or they're not exempt from disclosure, and so we have to search through them, and that can take time. And so what we'll typically do, especially when we have multiple requests at the same time, is we'll provide the records that we can provide on a rolling basis. We'll provide batches of responsive records as they become available, and typically, most requesters understand this situation and they appreciate getting the records in that So there are exceptions in the Public Records Act for certain types of requests. If you get a voluminous request, then you may have to provide the records on a rolling basis, as I just described. And then sometimes, people request records that are just kind of fishing expeditions or sometimes referred to as needle in a haystack, and there are, there is some case law for not having to produce records when you receive a request like that.
All right, so I'm going to go through the recommendations and the findings one by one, and our response is according to the state code, which is outlined in your report in terms of how to respond to a finding as well as a recommendation. So finding number one is the city does not properly respond to CPRA requests because it does not indicate if it will respond, does not respond within 10 days, overutilizes the 14-day extension, invokes a need for a 14-day extension for reasons beyond those permitted in the statute, as well as fails to provide all documentation. We disagree in whole with finding number one. In terms of does not indicate if it will respond, the guideline for the law is that the CPRA does not require a public agency to indicate if it will respond. The law requires that the public agency determines if it has responsive documents by the 10th day and communicates accordingly with the requester. Included in your report on page three is a standard template that the city provides. It is a new template. We have been implementing new processes in 2019, and it does communicate as a courtesy that acknowledging the And it does communicate as a courtesy that acknowledging the receipt of the records request. But again, the threshold by the law is to determine whether we have responsive records. In terms of does not respond within 10 days, the law is that we need to determine whether we have responsive records and whether we will be producing records. The city responds to public records requests within the required 10-day period. In complex requests, as already mentioned by the city attorney, the city utilizes the rolling basis, which is outlined in the League of California Cities guideline, as noted in your report. In terms of overutilizes the 14-day extension, the guideline is outlined in your report in terms of which government code is relevant. And just want to acknowledge that the city does utilize a 14-day extension. We looked at our processes in terms of these requests specifically that are the subject of the investigation and the grand jury report. We believe we implemented the 14-day extension appropriately. And we also think that, given the hundreds of Public Records Act requests and the fact that there were three public records requests made by the grand jury, that the term "overutilize" may be a little subjective. We do use the 14-day, but it is within the standards outlined by the law. In terms of fails to provide documentation responsive to the request, we respond with our legal duty to provide responsive records, as noted in the city's response. And given the high volume of records, we do utilize the rolling basis for high-volume manual reports that we have to produce. Recommendation one is the city should train staff responsible for responding to CPRA requests to timely indicate the city will respond to the request and further only invoke the 14-day extension where permissible. This recommendation has been implemented during the course of the grand jury report in March or the investigation. We were offering training. The city utilizes department liaisons to assemble the records and work with the appropriate offices, either the clerk's office, the attorney's office, or the manager's office, to produce the reports. We have had some additional training as we prepare for implementation of software. On August 5th and August 7th, we did review the public records process. August 13th, we had additional training around the software that we will be implementing. And these trainings are compliant with the California Public Records Act. We also distributed the California Public Records Act guideline book. It's issued by the League of California Cities. It's a best practice for how to guide cities. And so our liaisons also have access to those materials to help navigate through processes. Response to finding and recommendation number two, the city lacks a written policy to guide staff in responding to the CPRA request in a manner that complies with the law. We also disagree in whole with finding number two. The city does maintain written policies to guide the response to CPRAs. If you look at City Manager Directive 013, it's the public records request. And as this organization knows, the City Manager's Directive serves as our administrative policies to city staff for purposes of following the city's practices and procedures. That policy has been in place since June 1999. The City Council Policy Manual also has Policy 046, which provides instructions and is the policy for the mayor and city council with respect to public records policies. As well as, as noted in your report, the city attorney has issued confidential memos in terms of records management and other items that require attorney-client privilege. These are just the face copies of the policies that have been in place. And so we believe that disagreeing in whole is appropriate to this recommendation and finding. Recommendation number two, the city should create and implement a written policy by October 31st, 2019, to guide city staff in complying with the CPRA. The recommendation has been implemented, as evidenced through the June 1999 City Manager Directive, as well as the other policy for the mayor and council. Response to finding and recommendation number three, the city's disorganized record-keeping and lack of a functional records management system hinders its ability to timely and accurately comply with CPRA requests. Although the city purchased records and CPR management systems 18 months ago, it has yet to implement those systems. We also disagree in whole with this recommendation. The report outlines several actions. If you look at pages nine through 11, there's 13 significant actions that the city has taken over the last two years to prepare the organization for this software system. We mentioned in the report that there were a lot of tasks, everything from even providing our records that were stored downstairs in a proper environment where they would not be water damaged or just damaged by temperature. And we've been able to do that, as well as implementing areas such as Granicus and other things of that sort. And so we believe that the steps that we outlined in the report that we've taken over the last 18 months definitely suggest that this is not anything that we have been relaxed about, but rather there is a specific sequence of events that needed to take place in order to prepare and train the organization for this software installation. On April 5th, I think it's worth noting that there's an email in your packet where we have been planning for the implementation of LaserFusion Next Request. In fact, we shared an advanced copy of our PowerPoint, which outlines our work plan for implementing these software systems with the grand jury during the nature of this investigation, as evidence that this isn't anything that we are relaxed about, but rather, preparing an organization for the implementation of this type of software is equally as important so that our business practices can conform to new software, recognizing that our business practices were very manual, as well as somewhat antiquated, and that we needed to make sure that we weren't putting those types of business processes into a new software. And so that's what we've been working towards as outlined in your report for over the past two years. Here's just a stacked diagram of the series of events that are outlined in the report. They're in narrative form on pages nine through 11. But we thought it was important to show over the course of the term, at least from when I started as city manager, of how we've been utilizing our time to cultivate this organization for the installation of the, to reference, software developments. And also other opportunities that we took advantage of first, like Granicus, which has had the biggest impact with respect to transparency and digitizing documents that the city has. For recommendation number three, the city of Santa Clara should implement its records management and CPRA management system by December 31st, 2019. The recommendation has not been implemented, but we are on track to implement Next Request by mid-October 2019. We've already started training staff, and so we will continue to prepare for the installation of this online portal. In absence of an operational CPRA and records management system, the city of Santa Clara should create and immediately implement interim procedures to comply with the CPRA. We have already begun to implement procedures, and they are interim, of course, until we get to the software system being 100% implemented. But we have tracking documents in terms of a log system with all of the records requests that we have, all of the unique records requests, and the dates that, the 10 days that are out, the 14 days are out. And this is something that we regularly check during the day. It isn't anything that, it's put aside. It's something that we manage daily to make sure that we're responding to requests. Response to finding and recommendation number four, the city's public records manager is the only staff member trained to respond to the CPRA, yet the records are decentralized, requiring the records manager to rely on other staff within the departments to search for and obtain records, documents responsive to CPRA. We disagree in whole. In the report, we outline that the Assistant City Manager, the Deputy City Manager, the Assistant City Manager in my office, as well as myself, we all have extensive background in responding to records requests, as well as the city attorney's office knowledgeable of the law. We've also had the opportunity, as I mentioned, that we have department liaisons within our departments to provide them training. And we've already outlined the dates that that training was provided. The city should identify and train necessary staff on compliance with CPRA. The recommendation has been implemented. We see this as something that will be continuous as staff moves on to new assignments or as we get new staff to also partake in providing, going through the documents. It's a continuous training opportunity throughout the organization, much like other administrative processes. We've already noted that several trainings have been offered, as well as there's a pretty deep skill set within this organization for responding to records. In terms of benchmarking, one of the areas that we were very interested when we received this report is how is it that we look when we compare to other organizations? And are we irregular in terms of our practices? Or are we falling within the margin of what would be normal or considered normal? We took the opportunity to benchmark the city of Santa Clara against surrounding organizations, some of which we've worked for and have performed the same duties, and some of which we thought are regional in nature that would allow for us to understand how is it that we fare when compared. We found that all of the cities are like us in that they have manual records and they're partially digitized. And the report outlines, I think Sunnyvale is targeted to going towards an electronic management system in 2020. But for the most part, all records showed, some records are digitized, but not all. And that's exactly where we're at with respect to implementation of Granicus and how we've maintained other documents. I do want to acknowledge that where we differ, and I think this is the next slide, is we do have a high number of records requests when we compare to other cities. If you'll look at Sunnyvale, our neighbor, they're on a monthly basis receiving about five records requests, and we receive about 100. And I've tried to update every council meeting of late, how we're trending with respect to our records requests. And you can see in other cities, I think the higher number is Mountain View, where on average, about 34 requests. And so it really provides some context in terms of perspective. When we look at these requests that are coming in, one of the things that's important, as we mentioned, in terms of the needle of the haystack environment or request or the voluminous request, we can get some records requests that are multi-part. And I'm certain the council has seen them in that a letter will come in, and it can be a 15-part request. And so we consider those unique records requests because each of those requests, we need to pool records for and go through all of the parts of the request. And I want to show an example. If you could just push this out. This is an example of the records that we have. I don't know if the council can see it.
Push it right in front of me, because I think this is on me, one request.
So this is, in fact, you're absolutely right, mayor. The bottom portion are your emails of one request that came in. And the top part is another request. And what this shows is, this is the response to one unique request. And what this requires, so think about this 282 times, which is where we were trending just two weeks ago. But what's important to really grasp here is every one of these records needs to be gone through manually in that we have to look at, look at the email, look at the file, look at the text message, or look at whatever evidence is provided to us, whether it's responsive or not, and determine whether it's responsive. And we put it in a pile. If you come in my office, you can see the post. It's from last night's work. We put it in a pile, non-responsive, attorney-client, deliberative, and then if it needs redacting. And so we then prepare the information in those categories, those four categories. The attorney's office will review the attorney-client to validate, as well as the deliberative. And if they're redacted, we also have to review what needs to be redacted in order to release the record. That's a manual process, and this is one response. This is how we're using our time. And I'm looking at Nora, Simrat, Nadine, and myself in terms of the exercise, and Brian, of course, the exercise that we're going through. And it has an impact. It has an impact on services. I've not been shy with that, with the council and with the public, in terms of, this is just one request for one council member, and this request is actually for all seven council members, I believe, which means that we'll be pooling probably equivalent amount of records and doing the same exercise. But I thought it was important for the public to understand just the volume and what documents we have to go through. So in terms of benchmarking, I've already mentioned that we thought the grand jury should have included benchmarking. We thought that would have really revealed that we are a significant outlier when compared to the surrounding cities. We thought that we were, we think we're similar, as what we found in terms of our research with respect to being, we manually maintain documents, much like other cities. We believe that's an inefficient way. We have systems in place to get us towards a software system. It does take time to concurrently respond to records while also trying to implement software. We talked about that in January. That's no surprise to the city council. As well as we are an outlier when it comes to the number of requests. And I also just want to mention that July and August has been a peak period for us. So our recommendation, based on the supporting documentation in the report, as well as the presentation and our comments today, is that you approve the prepared response and that you authorize the mayor to submit the top, a cover letter with the attached report. And we're happy to take questions.
Okay, Councilmember Davis?
Thank you, City Manager, for this. I mean, this is like ridiculous for just staff alone. I'm appalled here. This is crazy. The grand jury report, yes, I would like to make a motion to approve staff recommendation for the letter to be written from the mayor. But I have a question for the city attorney. What would be a good course of action for us to take to, like, get this out to the public, this amount, I mean, because not everybody's watching us right now? Just the sheer amount of time? And I think it would be a major win for us to show the community what is happening to our staff. I mean, so can you give me, like, maybe a course of action that we can provide to let people know what is the impact to our city?
You know, I think the city manager is doing a good job in terms of, you know, quantifying the number of records that we're getting. I don't know if we're quantifying the time at this point. I can certainly tell the public here and now that it takes up an enormous amount of time. You know, for the gentleman that's asking about the lawn bowling. I mean, the reason we can't deal with a lot of things, the requests that we get from the public for services, is because we're using our time, regardless of, you know, whether the stadium authority would pay for it with respect to their records or whatever. I mean, it is still a huge amount of time from city staff and the city attorney's office that takes away from our ability to provide services. Unfortunately, the Public Records Act does not say that you can't do that. There's some case law dealing with this issue of burdensomeness and the needle-in-the-haystack kind of request. But if you think about that, it would take a lot of time and effort to take a case like that to court and prosecute that. So what we try to do is, we believe, and staff is very committed, believe me, staff is very committed to transparency. But the way we keep records here, unfortunately, has not kept up with technology, so it's not easy necessarily to provide the information in a quick way. And so we're stuck with what we have, which is a manual process at this point. We are implementing Next Request, which will at least provide a running tally of all the requests made, as well as the responses to that. In the past, we have not kept the responses. So that if someone had previously made a request and someone had a similar request, we could simply say, hey, look, just look at the records we produced the last time someone made that request. Unfortunately, the people that were here before did not do that, and so we don't even have the records that they might have given before. So, you know, we're trying to make improvements, but again, and you hear this... you hear this analogy many times, we're changing the engine on the car while it's running. And that's really what we're doing here. Other than to say it takes, what I would say is an inordinate amount of time, that takes away from us being able to provide city services, I can't really give you a quantity. I can tell you that, at least from the attorney's office standpoint, a lot of attorneys use the Public Records Act request as a way of avoiding discovery and litigation. In other words, they can get from us things without filing a lawsuit. They can just simply request records and start building a case before we even have, we even have an opportunity to get any discovery from them. And in fact, that's, that seems to be what the 49ers are doing to us now. We have literally dozens and dozens of requests from the 49ers, which, which seems to be a tactic they're taking to overburden our office, as well as the manager's office, just to put pressure on us.
I just, I want to give you some examples. I would characterize, and I'm looking at Simran, Nora, Nadine, and myself, in terms, we're the, we're the ones who are moving and coordinating, at least over 100 to 120 hours, considering that we're doing 25 to 30 hours each, plus our regular work. What that doesn't include is the departments that need to produce the records and IT that needs to do the searches for any digital documents that we have. So this is just emails, but of course, there's files, there's plans, there's other types of documents that may come up and that we have to look through. We did get one records request, and, and I'll just, I'll characterize the extent of it. It was for every single job brochure that the city has issued, or every brochure, I'm looking at Nadine and Nora, they're nodding yes, which means that we would have had to gone manually through all of our files to pull those, or just because they were, they could have been mixed in with other documents, and produce them. Our HR director literally said, I'm either going to be recruiting, doing recruitments, or I'm going to have to direct staff to pull those files, because I just don't, I don't have enough staff to, to do both. And that's the decisions that we're making at sometimes, is if the records are requested, we have to say, what services do we provide and how do we keep our regular services moving while still providing responses to these requests?
Okay. With that being said, and the chart that you just showed, and these other cities that are around us, you went by populous, but why are we inundated? Why 1,300 in one year, and these other people have five, or 30, Mountain View, 34? Okay. What makes us so unique? Because I'm looking at these numbers, and I'm saying, we have this abnormally high rate, we have impacted staff. And then what I would ask for, as a council member, I would like to know who's requesting these? Why are they requesting these? I mean, I want to see a major list of what's going on here, because is it, is it a telltale? That it is, is it a group of people? I mean, or is it a, because my, I'm looking at this, this request as a tool for harassment for the City of Santa Clara, which I think is ridiculous, because how can you maintain your job and still do this? I mean, do we have to keep going out and hiring people? And those cities also, you had on the chart, it said that they have manual and digital, and they're, we were in the same column. We're just as guilty as everybody, any other city. So why are we being subjected to this? I mean, like, what is going on that we have to deal with this 24/7?
I did mention last week, and I'll ask Nora or Nadine to pull up the numbers, I did mention last week that 70% of our records requests are from media outlets or from the 49ers. And with the exact number breakdown, they'll, they'll have to pull forward, because we too want to, you know I love data, and data helps make informed decisions, but that helps us understand in terms of where, where are the hotspots for, for how records requests are coming in our way. And that's really what it's, 70% is comprised of.
But, but I just wanted to mention that under the Public Records Act, we do not have the right to ask the identity of the person requesting.
But you have someone's name signed to the request, don't you?
Not necessarily. I could walk up anonymously.
You have anonymous requests.
You can, you can be anonymous. Or, or some people have other people come in for them, and you don't really know who's, who's really behind asking for the request.
Okay. My motion still stands, that to make the staff recommendation to have the mayor sign off on this and send the letter back to the grand jury.
Thank you. Councilmember Watanabe? There was a motion, was there a second? Second. Councilmember Watanabe?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I had similar questions to Councilmember Davis. But you have, let me see, on the slide on page 12, the bottom one, where you show the request volume since mid-July 2019. I would be curious to know what the volume was prior to that, and especially since you've been here, City Manager, because I, I think that's, that's, that would be very telling as well, because I agree that this seems nothing more than harassment, you know, on, against the city in terms of, you know, just interrupting city services and, and really having an impact. So it was to, you know, just basically make, make the city look bad, as this report has tried to do, but you've been able to, to respond, you know, to these inaccuracies.
I, we are tracking the data as of mid-July, and we were reporting it out and being transparent around it, which in and of itself creates new public records requests. I think from last week to this week, we got two or three more, just based on my single comment last week of reporting out. But it does, this is, I would say that it has ticked up slightly. July and August was a high month, but this is pretty regular of what we've been experiencing in Jan, since January, when we brought in that this, doing the software installation and concurrently responding is posing challenges for us.
I'd actually like to make a note, we've closed 690 PRA unique requests this year, in 2019 so far, and that does not include public safety records requests.
And also, I'd like to add the comment, I think, I think the Smith decision, the San Jose case, Smith versus San Jose, which held that the text messages and private, private email of public officials is subject to public records, has increased the volume of requests, because now that, now that requesters know that they can get that type of record, if you do city business outside, you have adopted the policy, but still many of the record requests cite exactly that. We want to see any, any and all email and text messages that, that the elected representatives have with regard to certain topics. But I, but that definitely, there was an uptick after that decision came down.
Okay. And Brian, City Attorney, you made the comment about, you know, how attorneys use the PRA requests as a form of, you know, getting, doing discovery and litigation to save time. But, you know, going back to my time in the legal field, when there was discovery, you were given 30 days to respond. Is there any way, or is anybody proposing, you know, 30 days versus 10 days or a 14-day extension? I mean, it just, especially if attorneys are involved in this.
It doesn't, it doesn't matter, they have the right under the public record. It's, it's, there are several imbalances, if you will, when, when litigating against a public entity, and that's one of them. If you're a public entity, you're just subject to the Public Records Act, and you just have to comply with it. But it is used as a tactic in, in litigation, and there's not much we can do about it, other than to comply.
That's definitely unfair. And it just, and, I mean, I'm glad that, you know, that the city's looking at the new technology and implementing it, but even with the implementation of it, I mean, there would still be manual work involved, I would imagine, because not everything.
That's, there, unless we scan and, and digitize all of our documents, we will exist in, in a period of time when we are both manual and digitized documents. Right? And well, the next request will help, I wanted, I should have included this earlier, Councilmember Davis's question about time, next request will be able to track the time it takes to produce the records and, and to respond. And so that is a good, a good element of, of going into the software.
And then the, the other aspect of technology is not simply next request, it's, you know, to the extent that we can actually have the time and effort and be able to put into, for example, a financial management system. We have no contract database, and so a lot of our questions are about contracts. If we had a contract database with, you know, amounts of contracts, expiration dates, who they're with, things like that, you know, you can put that up on, on the, they're all public, all our contracts are public. We, if we had the technology and the time to implement the technology, we could just put that straight up on the, on the, on the internet, and people could just look for the records themselves that they're looking for.
Right.
But unfortunately, we're so bogged down in these types of requests, we don't have time to, to get that implemented.
You're playing catch-up all the time.
Exactly. We're playing catch-up all the time.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Chahal?
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, City Managers, for the report. I, I would like to emphasize, like, CPRA is an act which is made for people of the city or state or something. It adds so much transparency to it. So we cannot criticize the CPRA act as such, like, anybody has a right to ask for information, and that's the part of the government. And it adds transparency to it, and the, just like press. So PRA is one of the important pillar of our democracy, sort of, so that we have an efficient and transparent government. So I would like to acknowledge, given the circumstances, staff has done tremendous job in providing and servicing all the requests, whatever have been coming up. And their upkeep for giving the data for, for all these requests, which are astronomically high compared to our neighboring cities, I commend them for that thing. But at the same time, I, I don't agree with one of the finding we are proposing forward, like, I would go to the finding number three, for response to finding, recommendation number three. Yeah. Yeah, that's one. That's one, right. So we all are accepting that our record-keeping is not that great. And I know we have made leaps and bounds efforts since last, I just came on the council in January, December, but last couple of, maybe year or year and a half or two, we did make a tremendous amount of procedural improvements of our record-keeping. So our, this is one issue we have been facing on so many of other regular day-to-day affairs too. So I do agree, I don't disagree in whole with that. Like, we, this whole process, we should accept it as an audit. It's just an audit of how we are moving things. And if we accept that audit, any audit, is to improve our working down the line. Like, we can criticize the audit report, we can accept the audit report, but there is always room for improvement on that. And with this, I sort of agree that we do not have a good record-keeping. And time and again, we already discussed that, like, if, take an example, like, I agree with voluminous vague request, it is very difficult to get all the data. But I saw that appendix two for the third CPRA request, those are very specific requests. The CPRA request was invoices, like, if I, for any corporation, if you run a general ledger for a vendor, you can easily find out how many invoices have come, how many payments have been done. And if you are not able to do that, it means we are lacking in something. We need to make sure that any specific request should be fulfilled on that. So I want to point that out, I don't agree with the, that this disagree in whole, I can say partially disagree, and we are trying to make improvements, but I, that's, that's my comment on that. Thank you.
Anyone else? Councilmember Watanabe, you had more comments?
Yes, I just want to rebut the comment that Councilmember Chahal just made. You know, in light of what the city manager has taken upon herself and her staff in the last 18 months since you've come on board, I, I totally disagree with the comment that was just made, because you've come into a situation that was totally just in disarray, frankly. And, and you have done a fantastic job in order to get it all up to speed. And frankly, I totally find your response to number three, I agree with you, because you have made significant, you have taken significant actions over the last 18 months while concurrently implementing and preparing for additional technology. You have taken us from the past and brought us into the future. So I just want to, like I said, rebut that comment, and I thank you for what you have done to bring Santa Clara forward.
Thank you. Councilmember O'Neal?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So first of all, I want to say that, even though, I mean, it's, and I think there's been some comments along the line of democracy is often messy, and, you know, so the public does have, certainly has a right to know everything about how the public's, you know, how public government is conducting its, its business and its affairs on behalf of the public, unless it's some issue of personnel or some other item that is like, an item that's under negotiation that would be considered confidential. You know, my hope is that when we emerge from all this process, and I've had some discussion with staff as that, and, and the report alludes to it, talks about having some kind of online portal where people can search for more, you know, can search records and find it more easy, you know, perhaps for public contracts, there's no reason why people can't find that. And, you know, and maybe we have a better way to point people towards things, because I know people have said things to me like, oh, well, you never push, publish your RFPs or whatever. And I said, well, actually, if you go to the city website, if you go to procurement, if you go there, you can, I said, I'll take you to another, like, you know, bid, or it takes you to an outside repository. I said, but if you know how to navigate it, you can find it. So, and, and I kind of look at that in terms of the response to finding three. I myself, you know, we all get frustrated, and I, I used to like beg not to have to do a turn as being a department records coordinator. We used to kind of roach, have to roach, okay, whose turn is it this year to be the liaison? You know, so I, I know it's very tedious, and, and that's perhaps not where my talents or my mind laid, but, so I think the thing is, the city has the records, and they have them. And as, as we said, we talked about the other benchmarking, it's, it's just perhaps that they weren't accessible very quickly through a digital means. So it doesn't mean to say that they weren't organized. I'm sure they were in there, you know, by files and all of that, and, and the city has had, in many ways, and I think that this was one, in the past, one of the city's strategies towards finding ways to be, keep headcount down, was by having a lot of functions very decentralized into departments and not having, like, a lot of central, like, whether it's procurement or contracts or whatever, not having centralized functions. And so I think that that served to take longer, so as I said, that doesn't mean that they weren't organized, it doesn't mean that they weren't there, it just means that it takes longer, you know, like Welcome to the Stone Age, where you actually had to go, you know, document by document and search through, as opposed to being able to type something to say, hey, Google, find this. You know, so maybe in the future here, not too long, we'll have that. And as I said, one of the things, as we continue to improve website design, will be to be able to show people, okay, you want to see everything that's going on with procurements, here's, here's where they are on the website. And don't be surprised if it takes you to an outside website, because there's another vendor that's managing that for us, or something like that. So my hope is that ultimately, we'll end up with that. I, I do think we're making a lot of progress, and I know that, you know, in prior, the prior, some of the administrations and the prior city clerk, we had started to make those steps. We had acknowledged that we wanted to digitize and, you know, because I remember, I used to be one of the main ones that would even complain about the fact that they would take a, the practice that then often, usually by the city clerk's office, was to like, scan a hard copy and load it, rather than putting a searchable PDF. And so it took a while to get that notion through, but finally, we got so that we were having searchable PDFs. So I, I think, you know, I, I hope that we will emerge through this process whole. I do, I would ask, and I've had people put in PRAs, even on me, people I know, and I said, if you wanted to know that, why didn't you just ask me? I'll tell you. And, and I said, because it wasn't just me, you just impacted now all these, the rest of city staff and all this to do all this searching. And it was kind of like, well, I just wanted to kind of see what maybe might turn up. So, so that's certainly within every citizen's residence right to do that. But when you, when you think about when you want And it was kind of like, "Well, I just wanted to kind of see what maybe might turn up." So, so that's certainly within every citizen's residence right to do that, but when you, when you think about when you want these other things done, you know, if, to see if there's another way that maybe, or if you can focus your request to what it is specifically you want to find, as opposed to having, you know, you know, killing a few redwood trees here or whatever, to, to, then you have to search through and find what it is. So, I, I would just ask people to be judicious, and as I said, I want to say, we acknowledge that it is certainly the public's right to be able to, to, to find records, but please be judicious.
Thank you. Councilmember Chahal, you have more comments?
As Councilmember Kathy Watanabe said, I'm not criticizing the staff, I started my comments that staff has done a tremendous job. What I'm trying to say is, it's not a question that any PRA request can only be happen for the last two years. We have a PRA request which can go past two years, yes, since last, I specifically said, since last year and two years, we have done a tremendous job, I, I commend the staff for that. But, because the records are not organized, and if you read the whole report, grand jury report, we did find, we found one documents at one time, we didn't find other document at other time, we found the document later on, we found it. So, that finding that disorganized record-keeping, I, I, I'm just trying to say that, and the report itself says, "The city's disorganized record-keeping and lack of functional records management system hinders its ability to timely and accurately comply with CPRA," and that's the point I'm trying to make. And it's, I'm not trying to blame any particular staff member, but how the records have been stored for last five, 10, 15 years, whatever we have, those are not giving us an accurate picture and not helping us to timely give the CPRA requests back.
I, I just want to- I was gonna ask Councilmember Chahal, based on your comments, do you have a recommendation?
I have a recommendation, and we are working on it, like, if we can digitize as soon as possible, like, Google can search anything like a second, like, if we, we do that, if we do digitization as soon as possible, that can help us a lot, and it's not a one-day process that we can swing the stick and it all goes, everything goes fine, we are on that process, but I'm trying to say, this recommendation finding is not wholly, we cannot wholly disagree with that. That's my point.
City Manager? I, I want to acknowledge what Councilmember Chahal said about staff's good work and, and all of the compliments, because it, it really goes to staff who really, truly believe in transparency, I think it's been shown through several of our actions, to bring data, to bring more information, and communicate more broadly around even public records. And so, I, I acknowledge his comments, and, and I agree in full. I do also want to acknowledge that because staff is committed to transparency, I'm, I'm looking at three right in front of me, that they're working weeknights, weekends, I've been called back to work to get, push this information out, and it is not that the information is disorganized, it is that it is voluminous, it is a manual review process, and the, our, we have stated very clearly in the report, our record system being manual is inefficient. And I, I would argue that our ability to respond and keep pace, if you just look at the one chart where we go from 282 to 143 in one week, that, or 168 from one week, that is not a sign of being disorganized, that is a sign of being, of being transparent and knowing how to retrieve the records, going through them quickly, as you see in front of you, the volume, and being able, being able to respond. That doesn't mean that there isn't a better way to do it. We, we acknowledge in our report, this is an inefficient way, and frankly, it's, it's burdening our, our staff morale, it's burdening our fatigue level for staff, but because we believe in transparency, we get those records out and we drive those numbers down. And so, I just, I would, in fact, in, in the instance here, with respect to the actual recommendation, we provided the boxes of where the contracts are, we don't have a, a digitized contract management system as what's been already stated in, in the record, but we did respond with the boxes of contracts and the agreements, we offered many times to narrow down the request for the requester, and we provided documents on a rolling basis, which is completely allowed through the law, and it's, it's a best, it's a tip, as, as outlined by the League of California Cities. That's compliant, it may not be what the requester asks for, or on the time, or even in their understanding of the CPRA, but it is compliant with the law, and, and I think our, our evidence of responding to the high volume is, it definitely shows that we're not as disorganized as we're being characterized.
Thank you, City Manager. Anyone else on the council?
All right, I just want to make a couple of comments. As a former grand juror, I understand the process that they go through in order to do their reports, but, you know, when I look at this report, and I see that the grand jury didn't benchmark us with any other city, they didn't, and they didn't even factor in the source of most of the requests, as the city manager, city attorney said, 70%, I think you said 70%, were from 49er or media regarding the 49ers. So, when you take 1,300 PRA requests, and you take away 900, which is 70%, that brings us in the 400 range, which is typical of Mountain View, Cupertino, we're, we're all, we're in the normal range of public records requests. So, the numbers, you know, they don't tell the full story. The question is, why is Santa Clara being targeted for these requests, when 70% are coming from them? So, I look at myself, how many times I've been PRA'd since I've been mayor, it's been a tremendous amount of times, I mean, you see the bottom here, that's just from one request on me, I have requests from the 49ers, the 49ers consultants, the 49ers attorneys, the 49ers media friends, and the list goes on and on. And wait till I'm running for office, last November, I was packed with public records requests that our staff has to deal with, and one of my questions was, why aren't they just sharing them with each other? They're all asking for the same thing, but they have to be uniquely researched over and over and over. I almost said, "Why don't we just put all our emails and everything online, oh, you know, real time, so everyone could see them?" But the fact of the matter is, we are being targeted from groups that are trying to intimidate and harass us and cause us a lot of work. We, I totally understand, there are very legitimate public records requests, we get a lot from residents and others, and those are extremely legitimate, but once you start looking into these areas where, you know, there, it's just pure harassment, it really is, but we have to respond. So, what our public needs to know, and what I was hoping maybe the grand jury would follow up on, is why is Santa Clara so far out of line with other cities when 70% are coming from this one entity? You know, that's the real question, and I'm wondering if we could put something in the letter that even, that even addresses that, because we do have legitimate, in the meantime, we need to tell our public, guess what? They are forcing us to spend a lot of public money, a lot of time, on a lot of things that we would rather be working on in our city. They're stressing out our staff, they're forcing us to spend public resources, and why? Why? That is the big question, I think, you know, that's the big elephant in the room, we're all trying to talk about it, but, I mean, those, those are the facts. So, City Manager, I'd like you to bring back, who is asking for all these, including which media outlets, because I think that there's one in particular that is really, you know, forcing us to do all this, and, and I know we put all these things online, and it's fine, they can ask for it, but I'd say we need to address and put more resources onto this, and we need to tell the public how much we're spending and where these are coming from, just so they know. We get a lot of complaints, "Why aren't you working on, you know, this particular issue?" Like, you know, business co-ops, or, or, you know, "Why aren't you working, spending more money on our parade," or doing all these other things that we really want to do. But because we're spending so much on this, you know, the public needs to know what we're doing and how much time and effort and money, who's asking for it, what the requests are, put them all online so everyone can see, because, you know, unfortunately, coming next year, we have another election, and whenever there's an election, the, the spikes from the certain groups go up, so they can use it for election material and everything else, but, I mean, I, I'd really like to ask the grand jury to follow up on why Santa Clara is different than other cities, and why we are being targeted and other cities aren't. So, like I said, I'll go ahead with the motion to approve it, but I, I do think we're doing our best, I do think we need to put more resources at this, so that we can get them out quicker, digitize them, get them out as quickly as we can, so that we can move on to other city business. But in the meantime, we're going to have to spend more public money addressing the situation that the grand jury brought up, and I'm fully in favor of that, I just would love to get to the, you know, story and let the public know what groups are, are forcing us to spend all this time and money, and for what reasons. So, anyways, is there anyone else that would like to speak on the council, and then I'm gonna go to the public?
Okay.
Councilmember Davis?
So, City Manager, with what the mayor just said, the letter that is written to the grand jury, is it just allowable for the findings and, you know, and the, the response, or can we put these-
Ask them to follow up.
Follow up. Can we put this information that you've already acquired, you know, for the benchmarking and whatnot, just to show them that this is like a little out of its skew here?
The, the penal code has a very, very specific-
Okay, so we can't add that-
Well, you can certainly send another letter along with it, it's just that the, the let, the response itself should follow the penal code, and then if you, if you want to have a separate communication that goes along with the letter, that's perfectly fine.
Okay, I would, I just want to note the report- Can I put that with the original motion, because the agenda clearly states, staff recommendation for the mayor to sign off on the letter, so I don't know if I could amend to add the benchmarking.
So, the report is structured in two ways, part one is the, is the response according to state code, the second part is the benchmarking and the contextual information, we're gonna forward the whole report with the attachments under the cover letter of the mayor to the, to the court.
Okay, thank you.
So, my motion can stand as included right now. Okay, all right, thank you.
So, we have a motion and a second, let's go to the public, any member of the public like to speak. Do we have any cards, Assistant City Clerk? No, please come forward.
City Manager, first, I'm sure the citi, I'm Carolyn Shuck with the Santa Clara Weekly, and I'm sure the city manager would call me a serial offender, but I would also like to say that the records department has done an incredible job, and they just did a great job today, too, this afternoon, within hours, so they are doing a great job. If, City Attorney Doyle or City Manager, if you happen to know, generally off the top of your head, I'd like to know how many records requests, say, in the last six months, have been received from Adams, Broadwell, Joseph, and Cardozo-
Please address the council.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, Mayor. How many have been received from Adams, Broadwell, Joseph, and Cardozo? Because we were told, or actually, one of your city staff said at a public meeting, that they had sent the majority of the records requests the city had received, so I want, I'd like to have clarification on that, if there is, and the mayor mentioned something would be a great idea to have the, everybody's emails accessible, and there is a public agency that does exactly that, it's the Regional Water Quality Control Board, and you can just go to their site, and you can see every communication on any subject you're interested in. So, I think it's a great idea, Mayor, I think we definitely should implement it.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council. First of all, I want to commend our city council for the excellent job in bringing out openness to the people. And I'm appalled at this, I'm totally appalled, and I will be writing something on Facebook and on Twitter regarding this, because this is absolutely asinine. I don't know, I, I made a mistake not too long ago by writing a little thing requesting the council to go visit a cemetery, and it went berserk, I mean, it took a life of its own and wound up in the Mercury News, and everybody knows that the Mercury News doesn't even like Santa Clara, and so, they were really scathing. I will never do that again, because I think I will come to you first, if I have a problem like that. I think that if the public were more willing to bring a problem to the forefront, they could get it handled. I know that the minute I, I wrote that, I immediately got a response from city council, immediately, within minutes of posting on Facebook, and, and I, I didn't expect it to take a life of its own, but I would like to say that, please, in the future, we are partners with the city, the, the public, and I am putting, I'm gonna put out a plea to the public, that we are partners with the city. The city isn't against us, the city is working for us, and we need to be partners with them and bring up the things that we need to get clarified, and this records thing, I don't understand at all. I mean, this is, this makes me sick.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hello, resident Anthony Becker. Thing I've learned in my life is, when I'm in my job and I do something wrong, I have to admit I'm wrong. When I was a kid and I did something wrong, I had to admit I was wrong. Here we are in a situation where we can learn from this. Yes, there's an organization out there that's doing all this, asking for public records, and, you know, that takes away from the people that are asking for it, that are a third-party or just a public, a public resident. So, when I see this, I think, why do we keep having to fight and spin everything that we say? Why don't we just take this as a learning curve and say, "You know what? We're gonna move forward, we're gonna adapt, and we're gonna modify our systems, we're gonna move into that 21st century." I commend city staff for doing that, but the thing is, is that, just like the CVRA lawsuit, the judge said, "You're wrong." In this situation, the grand jury said, "We're wrong." Just a week ago, the city council just said, "The grand jury's great for going after VTA." The thing is, we need to accept our faults and move forward. I have to accept my faults in my life, the city should accept theirs. We're gonna move forward from this, and you know what? If we keep spinning our wheels, we're gonna spend more and more taxpayer money on wasted issues rather than positive things. So, I asked the city council to stop this bickering, I mean, this is just continually a back-and-forth tennis match, I'm tired of the politics in the city, it's either 49ers or developers, developers or 49ers, let's move forward. I get what's going on in the city, it's divided, and I'm tired of having to pick sides, and I'm tired of having to be in the middle of it. Just admit you're wrong, just admit everything is wrong, and we're gonna move on, we're gonna adapt. So, I say to the city, "Thank you, but let's just identify the elephant in the room, we were wrong, just like the CVRA lawsuit."
Anyone else? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Please register vote. And that passes unanimously, thank you, city staff, city manager, city attorney. All right, next, we have a charter review committee update. Do we have a PowerPoint on this?
Ready whenever you are.
Are you ready, City Clerk?
Yeah. Okay, so, as you know, just, this is just a verbal update, we started with the charter review committee that the council selected, a, it's actually a very dynamic group of folks, and since then, we've had two meetings, where the charter review committee kind of went through the, what they were tasked to do by the council, there were some questions in- There were some questions and clarifications as to the scope of their task, and we clarified that the scope was to respond directly to Measure N and to solicit input from the community on what kind of election system, whether we want to stick with six districts or move to an alternative configuration from the community. The committee members came up with some ideas on how to do additional outreach to the community. They have been doing what we're calling listening sessions. So, individual committee members, either on their own or in partnership with another committee member, have been going out and doing listening sessions. So far, two listening sessions have been hosted. I will report, though, that unfortunately, the attendance at those listening sessions has not been well-attended. There are scheduled right now two additional listening sessions and a third one that is confirmed but has not been publicized yet before the work of the committee is over. And so, I encourage the members of the public who are watching this meeting now, if they are interested to provide their inputs, to go on the website for this Charter Review Committee and attend one of the listening sessions that are upcoming or one of the upcoming meetings. The website is, it's actually hosted on the front banner of the city's website. If you click on that, it'll take you to the sub-page that includes all of the upcoming meetings and listening sessions, as well as videos of the prior meetings. One of the other ideas that came from the committee, and they worked as a subcommittee to come up with survey questions. So, in addition to the listening sessions and the committee meetings, there has been an open city hall survey online that any member of the public can go and fill out. It is pretty much synonymous to showing up to the meeting during the public comment session and providing your own input. So, they're able to indicate what kind of configuration they prefer, whether it's six districts, three districts, two districts, or some other configuration. And there's also an open form for them to provide free-form comments and suggestions. As of yesterday, we have 219 responses. So, it's actually some good response. We're hoping that we can get, with more publicity, we'll get more responses from the public. But if you think about 219 responses from individuals, if they came to a public meeting and gave a two-minute session, that's almost 500 minutes' worth of public comment. So, we're able to take that. It's not a scientific poll or survey of the public, but it does give us an opportunity to get a pulse of what the community prefers. So, there's also been some outreach with eNotif. There's been several emails that have already been sent out to residents who are signed up for eNotif. There have been posts on Facebook, on Twitter, on Nextdoor, informing the community about the charter committee meetings, as well as the listening sessions that there are available. There was a suggestion to go, to put something in the bill. So, you'll see in this month's Mission City Scenes, the bottom portion of the front page is dedicated entirely to the Charter Review Committee upcoming meetings, and a link to the website with a brief blurb on what the committee is tasked to do. And also, with the new Inside Santa Clara, it's taking basically the whole right-hand side of the front page. So, again, more information to disseminate to the community about what the Charter Review Committee is tasked to do, to solicit input from the community about the method, how we want to do the elections. The flyers that have been put out in, there have been flyers that have been put out in the libraries and City Hall. We're also generating translated versions of the flyers, and those languages, or that version of the flyer will be available very shortly, to be translated in Chinese, Hindi, and Spanish. And then, also, for those who don't have the ability to fill out the survey online, there's printed versions of the surveys that are also available at these locations. So, all in all, the kind of the update that I wanted to give is that we've been doing quite extensive outreach. The attendance at the listening sessions has been minimal. There has been some robust discussion at the committee meetings. Again, attendance is what you would expect, or on average, to what other city committee meetings have been like. So, not, we're not filling the halls, but we are getting some valuable feedback. And then, obviously, from the survey, we've been getting quite a bit of feedback from the surveys online as well. So, that's pretty much just the verbal update. We have three more committee meetings on the 21st, which is a Saturday. This was, it was a request to add one on the weekend for those who cannot make the weekday meetings. It is at the Northside Library from 12:00 to 2:00 on the 21st of September. And then, there are two more meetings during the weeknights on Thursday, September 26th, at 7:00 p.m., and then Thursday, October 17th, is the final meeting at 7:00 p.m. And we've been rotating around the different libraries throughout the city to give people opportunities from throughout the city to attend. After the final meeting on the 17th, the committee will come back to the council for a recommendation.
Thank you. Councilmember Davis.
Thank you, Mayor. Hassan, over the weekend, I had a lot of verbal comments from residents, and they weren't good. The one complaint was that they were not focused on the issue at hand, and they were supposed to be having a deliberation on Measure N, and the conversation went off the rails to a seven council district, which clearly, in the Measure N, by a 70% vote, to keep the mayor at large. So, why was that conversation even had? That was one. The second one was, why were they discussing ranked choice voting, also not in the directive by council? So, can you answer that question? Because I've got a few more for you.
Yeah, so, as far as the comments and the feedback that the committee gets from the public, the committee can't censor the public's opinions on what they want to provide. So, we have had quite a bit of public input on methods of election, like ranked choice voting and other alternative systems, and we've had comments about, from several members of the public, who are suggesting to go to seven council districts with a non-directly-elected mayor. So, the role of the committee, whether they agree with those sentiments or not, is to hear those ideas and solicit them and collect them. The committee is not tasked or charged with evaluating, as you suggested, ranked choice voting or other methods. They are there to listen to community input about the kind of district system, or, you know, how many districts, or that sort of a thing. So, the public is free to suggest, and that is the whole purpose of the committee. But we have tried to refocus the committee to make sure that they are there to take the input from the community, distill it, and then come up with a recommendation. So, that's really the committee's charter, and we've been reminding them of that and helping them to focus on that portion.
Okay, because I was, so, you're telling me that a resident, because I know that somebody's been watching and listening to these two reviews, and it didn't seem like it was coming from a resident. It seemed like it was coming from the committee itself, the chair. So, I'm just, this is what I'm hearing. I'm just saying, we gave a directive. This is what was supposed to happen, so I just wanted you to kind of comment on that. And then, how are we going to, you said you had 219 responses on the website. So, that has become an issue. People don't even know to go to the website for the survey, number one. They didn't even know what was on there until I mentioned it. I said, yes, there is a survey. You can participate. And they said, well, I didn't know it was there. I said, okay, fine, so we directed them there. Second, how are you going to quantitate this data going online? How are you going to know when somebody applies anonymously, which I guess people like to do that in our city, anonymously? How are you going to know if it's a Santa Clara resident or it's a San Jose resident? How are you going to skew those numbers? I want to know how you're going to do that, because when you come back to us with the recommendation, how are we going to know that?
So, this was actually a great question. The committee asked that question of Dr. Gobalay as to who's our demographer, who's been attending all of our meetings, as to whether or not the survey responses constituted a mandate or a statistically significant representation of the sentiment of the community. The way the survey is designed, it can be submitted anonymously. There is no way to verify the residence or the citizenship of any applicant, or whoever's filling out the survey. There is a question on the survey, asking them whether they are residents. We have had some survey responses that have indicated that they are not residents of Santa Clara. So, it is totally possible for the committee members who are reading the responses, every individual response of the survey is provided to the committee members and the public who, you know, it's as part of the packet material. So, they are able to filter out those of non-residents, although it has been a very small number of responses that have come from non-residents. There is no way to verify that somebody hasn't filled out the survey more than once. The open city hall does recognize if you have filled out the survey from that same computer or phone, and so it will deny you the ability to fill out another response from that same computer or phone. But nothing prevents somebody from either clearing their cookies on their machine or logging in from a different device and filling out the survey. So, what the direction that we gave to the committee was that the responses of the survey were to help give them a pulse and to give them a, you know, kind of a sense of what the community was looking for. And in particular, the responses that people have been providing in the free-form comment section of the survey have been very insightful. So, you can actually get an understanding of the ideas that people have, or the sentiments, or maybe the frustrations that people had with the last election. So, while the survey results will not be a statistically significant mandate that would indicate this is what all of Santa Clarans want, it does help guide the direction or the kind of the sentiment that the committee will then come back with a recommendation for. The committee's job is to distill that information and then come up with a recommendation that they feel will work for the city, rather than, this is, you know, 20,000 people have all been verified as Santa Clara residents have filled out this survey, right? So, as far as publicizing the survey, like I mentioned, there's been several avenues where we've publicized a link to the survey, and the committee is working hard to figure out how to even bring more awareness to that. But the reality is, we just need to bring more awareness to the community by, you know, informing them of the existence of the survey and the meetings to show up and give their feedback.
Okay, when is that survey being cut off, the website?
It's going to remain open throughout the charter, yeah, throughout the charter committees. Now, obviously, the last meeting, they will not be able to distill or kind of figure out what, you know, if survey responses are coming in, you know, before, just, you know, before the last meeting, they won't have an opportunity to react to those. So, we're encouraging folks to go and fill out the survey sooner rather than later.
Okay, and then, my last question is, you kind of answered it a little bit, but we do have a printed copy of the survey to give to people that are not on social media.
Correct. And again, just like...
And where is that?
Just like with the online survey, to be able to identify that somebody filled out 10 copies, you know, and submitted 10 individual copies with the same kind of response to skew it, the whole idea of the survey is to get that sentiment rather than a statistically significant, or a statistically representative assessment of what the city wants or the community wants.
And where are these located?
So, these are going to be located at City Hall and...
Well, they're not out yet. The printed copies for them to...
The printed copies are not out yet, but you can, tomorrow, they will be out at City Hall, but then they will also be available at all the different listening sessions and the meetings as well. So, if people can't, we're not leaving them at the libraries exactly for that reason, where somebody can just grab a stack of them and then fill them out and return them. So, people will show up to City Hall, pick it up, they can fill it out and hand it in anonymously or by indicating their name as well.
So, there's no control point on this, again, for these being handed out, and you don't...
It's no different than the online survey, where somebody can multiple, you know, fill out multiple times the same response.
Okay, the other question I had was in one of the reviews on the website, that the city attorney will not be available on the 21st. You'll be out of town, correct, at the next meeting?
I won't be at the meeting, but I can certainly be available by phone. If City Clerk Hagag wants to ask me a question, he can certainly call me up, and I can answer it if the committee has a legal question. They don't really have very many legal questions. Most of the questions are kind of among themselves about how should we proceed? And the only real legal questions, I think, we've kind of gone through, but I can certainly be available by phone if a question comes up during that session on the Saturday. But I will be able to attend the other committee meetings.
Okay, because I kind of look at this as like a council meeting, and that all staff should be present for any reason. I know that you've been on the phone for the last meeting, so I don't know if that has any bearing on what's going on. I kind of view it as what we have to do and they have to do. So, I would really like the thing fully staffed at all possible. I know you're out of town, and the phone is the only alternative, but that, I would just want to bring that up as a question, because I kind of think that with what's going on and how some people have complained about how this committee's gone off the rails and to be refocused and have people there that can answer questions, and you are there publicly and not, you know, on the phone. And I know you have a busy schedule. I get that, just like we all can't be here at the same time either. So, that was my only comment on that one, and I just really, when I saw this, this is what you were talking about. I got this in the mail over the weekend, and this is really good, but I just think that the numbers are too low. This is very important, and when we came up with each one of us picking out a district person, that they would be accountable to the district and go out into the community and ask questions, I do believe there is one person that is doing that from the committee right now, has taken upon themselves to go out and ask the questions and get back to what's going on. But I really thought that this was going to be a little bit more community-engaged, and it doesn't seem that after two meetings, it's really community-engaged. It seems to be centered on opinions and other things that maybe they shouldn't be talking about, but the directive of Measure N. And I actually pulled out what we did when we appointed this committee. So, I kind of feel that we need to get it re-engaged, and those are kind of my comments for now. But I hope that we're going to get a better, I guess, control point. So, City Manager, is there some way that you can figure out a way that we can get out a more comprehensive, community-engaged, like, because if this is not going to be, the data coming back to us isn't going to be perfect, but how can we get something a little bit more quantitative for a decision? You know, because we have to rate a ballot measure, and we want to make sure that we're doing the right thing. This is about the residents. This is about their vote. So, I'm really concerned that we're not getting there.
I would want to meet with the city clerk and look at options that we could pursue in a timely basis that allows for us to get something before the council. I think the survey is a good opportunity to get anecdotal information. It's not scientifically or statistically valid. If you're looking for something like that, then it's a different, it's a different work plan that we would need to get.
Okay.
If that's a direction that the council wants to go in, but I would want the opportunity to talk with the city clerk and look at, look at what, whether, how that would fit in a work plan, if that's where you want to go, council.
If I may, so, we did have this discussion at length at the prior, at the last city, the charter committee meeting. To be able to get, so, we're not going to know exactly what the community wants until it actually gets put on a ballot. That's the ultimate way of knowing exactly what the community wants, which is what Measure N successfully did. It was on the ballot. Every voter who decided to fill out the answer to that question filled it out, and we had a 70% response rate indicating that they wanted to be engaged in that process, to look at, you know, how we set up the districts with an elected mayor at large. So, that was very clear. We won't get a response as clear as that until it actually goes on the ballot. The objective of the committee, which we've said even before starting the committee, was that, the idea was they were, their charter to go and solicit input from the community to figure out what system does the community want so that when it gets put on the ballot, the measure passes. So, we are not going, like, the objective of, the objective of the committee is not to go and do a scientific survey or research. We can certainly spend a couple hundred thousand dollars to do a statistically scientific or statistically meaningful survey of all registered residents within the city, but really, that's not what the committee is out there to do. They're there to get a pulse on the community, to figure out what will pass when the item gets placed on the ballot, so that our charter can be in compliance with what we are actually doing at the ballot box come election time. So, they're there to get a pulse in the community. I agree with you that certain committee members are more active than others. I agree with you that we're not getting the overwhelming response from the community and the show up and the attendance at the meetings that we had hoped to get, but I don't think it is, it was ever part of the idea that we would have a statistically meaningful survey or analysis of all residents within the city to be able to make a decision. survey or analysis of all residents within the city to be able to make a decision or determination. The idea is to get something that we can put on the ballot that we know will pass.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. In the mayor's absence as vice mayor, she did tell me that I was next up to speak, so I'm not going to bother to change my seat. So first of all, I want to commend the city clerk, because I think you've done a great job. I'm looking at the website now, our city's website, the first thing that comes up, you can't miss it, Charter Review Committee, and I don't always say this about our website, but this is really easy to navigate. You touch the screen, it brings you right to a page, it's all about the Charter Review Committee. It has a schedule of all the sessions, both the committee sessions and these listening sessions, which I think were a great idea. There have been two already. There are two more coming up that are hosted by three different members of the committee, one of whom is the chair. It's too bad that they didn't have good attendance at the first two, but that's nobody's fault. I mean, they're right here, they're easy to find, they're at convenient times, they're at different times, just as we asked for, they're at different locations, just like we asked for. So I really commend the city clerk, I think you've done a great job with this. As far as the online survey, that too is really easy to find, it's easy to click, you click, you're there. And as far as being, I mean, you can't ask, you can't demand that somebody give their name and address in response to a public input like this. If they're anonymous, you know, that more goes to the weight, not the, well, in legal terms, not the admissibility, but the weight, you know, how much weight do you give to a survey that's been completed by someone who doesn't live in Santa Clara, won't be impacted? How much weight do you give to a survey if it's anonymous, that somebody doesn't want to be recognized as being the author of the online survey? And the number of surveys, at this point, I think that's a pretty good response at this point, I think you'll get an increase, but anytime you can get, on a voluntary basis, you know, a couple percentage of the voters who are impacted by something like this, you've done a really good job. It's not a statistically significant survey, it's not, it's not a random, because it's not a random survey. I mean, that's the only way to get really statistical, reliable information is with a random survey. It's a voluntary survey, so the person already has exhibited that they have an interest in this outcome. So again, it goes to the weight that you give the responses of this survey, but still, it's a really good way to get public input, which is what the committee is doing right now. And the city clerk is absolutely right, you can't censor what people are going to say at a meeting. They are free to give their opinion on a variety of subjects that may not even be related to this at all, but at least these are tangentially related, and they are things that we have considered in Charter Review Committee on this issue before. So if you've got people that this is their, this is their cause, they want proportional voting, or they want ranked choice voting, they're going to come to these meetings and that's what they're going to talk about. We've seen it here at City Hall when we've had, you know, public discussions, that's what they'll talk about. So the city clerk's absolutely right, and I commend you for making sure that the public input stays open and stays uncensored, and we consider it all, and it doesn't mean that that's going to be what comes of the Charter Review Committee's recommendations, but you certainly can't censor people. So I think on the whole, on the balance, the city clerk's doing a really good job with this, and I think the public outreach, I mean, it's pretty good. I mean, it's, like I said, this is one of the better website pages that I've seen and one of the easier to navigate, so thank you for that.
Thank you, and I just, I want to also commend Robin from the city, you know, from city staff for doing a lot of great work on this as well, so thank you, Robin.
Councilmember Watanabe?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the questions and responses. I too have received complaints and concerns, and one I want to ask you about, you mentioned that there have been 219 responses, but I'm taking a look at the website right now, and it says 101 responses have been received. Does the website get updated, or am I looking at something incorrectly?
Are you looking at the, at the main page for the, the subpage for the Charter Review Committee? Or are you looking at the survey link itself?
I'm looking at the OpenGov page, opentownhall.com.
I'll have to take a look at that, but as of yesterday's query, we have 219 responses. I know in the last meeting, the committee reviewed 199 responses. So since the last meeting, a couple weeks ago, we've had an additional 20 responses. So the committee did receive all 199 at the last meeting.
Okay, yes, because I did hear that number quoted when I, because I, as a result, then I watched the last committee meeting, and I'm glad that you bring that up, because I believe there was a question as to whether or not some people who respond anonymously versus put their name in, would, would people who responded honestly, are those surveys considered a part of the overall number?
As part of the overall, like, 219 responses?
Yes.
Yes, they are, they are.
Okay.
But every response is provided in its entirety, and we have been providing all the responses to the committee members, and it's obviously part of the meeting record. So they are, they are able to, and they have been going through the responses individually to read, not just the free form, but to identify whether those responses were anonymous or they were identified, you know, the person who responded identified themselves in there, and then also the response to the question as to whether or not they were a resident. So every response is provided in its entirety, and again, as Vice Mayor Mayhan mentioned, like, you can assign whatever weight, subjective weight you want to it, if it was anonymous or if they were not living in the city, but maybe they had a good idea. So in any case, the committee has all of that information at their disposal to, again, make an informed decision as to what they think the community would respond well to at the ballot box come March.
Okay. Because, I mean, you know, we want to make sure that we're getting, you know, a realistic number here of, you know, of the residents, and I mean, I'm glad to know that if people try to log in again and take the survey and coming from, using the same, you know, computer or whatever, that they will get locked out or that they can't, you know, go through the survey. But again, there's still, you know, a mechanism that they can bypass to take the survey again if they want. Listening to the last meeting, I was, I did, I was concerned, because there was a committee member that did make a comment about going with the ranked choice voting, the ranked choice voting came up, and this was a committee member, and I know specifically, we talked here about when we were, when we chose the Charter Review Committee, that what topics they were going to talk about and what were not going to be talked about, and that was one of them. And I'm grateful that, you know, there was a committee member there that was able to say, hey, wait a second, Measure A, it failed, ranked choice voting failed along with the two districts. So, but I mean, I feel like, you know, we need to stay on top of what's being discussed at these meetings as well, to make sure that, you know, the direction, the scope, you know, is followed, because, I mean, we went to a lot to get to this point, and we want to do the right thing, so. But I have a question regarding, about the chair of the committee. There were four motions made at the last committee meeting, and all four of them were made by the chair. I mean, serving on commissions as a chair, I have, I always left motions to be made by the committee members. In this case, is the chair allowed to make motions?
Under Robert's Rules of Order, for smaller committees, the chair can make a motion, they're less, it's less formal at a, at a, at a smaller committee. So they follow Robert's Rules of Order. I mean, there's nothing illegal about making a motion. The chair, the committee has not formed any bylaws, they haven't formed any rules of procedure, so there's, there was no objection to the chair making the motion by the rest of the committee members.
Okay. I know you were there, and I figured if there was an issue, you would have said something.
Well, they haven't really selected a parliamentarian, but, you know, I mean, there was nothing illegal about what he, about making a motion.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. Yeah, and then, just finally, so you said that the, the survey is opened until, not October 17th, but after, or said, the second to last meeting is September 26th, will it be open beyond that date, or?
We'll figure out what the exact date that we'll close the survey on. I think there is value in keeping it open even after September 26th, because we'll continue to provide those responses to the committee members, so that when they show up on the 17th, they'll be able to see those additional responses. But clearly, by the 17th, the intent is that on the 26th, the, which is the second to last meeting, the committee will have some sort of direction that they would provide to the, to city staff, so that we can come up with draft language for the 17th, the meeting on the 17th. So clearly, the later, the longer people wait before providing their input, I want to say, the less, the less opportunity they'll have to maybe influence the decision or the kind of the direction that the committee wants to go to, towards the draft language that will be started, that will, you know, that they will give direction to city staff on the second to last meeting, which is the 26th, to come with language on the 17th to approve, that will come to council. So we'll leave the survey open, that's not a problem, and the committee members will continue to receive those responses up through the last meeting, but then, you know, maybe just immediately prior to the 17th, we'll close the survey down.
Okay. Well, I hope that, I mean, there were two motions, there were four motions made at the last meeting, two passed, and I'm hoping, based on those questions and motions, that it will get the committee back on track and the direction that they were given.
Yeah, and I want to comment on that just briefly, because I know there was, there was some concern that the, and even from Councilmember Davis, that the committee was going off track. I think in both of those meetings, you know, myself and the rest of staff had been very clear about the directive that was given to the committee, and I think even with the, with the final, with one of those motions about placing an item on the discussion or on the next agenda for ranked choice voting, that was, that did not pass.
Right.
So, and there was also, there was also a motion to put an item on the next agenda around the redistricting process, which, again, was not the, was not, which is not what the committee was asked to look at how the lines are drawn.
Right.
But simply to look at the number of districts and what kind of, you know, what kind of system the community wants. So also, that didn't pass. So I think, I think the committee as a whole very much understands the directive that they were given. Certainly, it comes up as part of discussions, but, but I think the committee understands very clearly that by the end of the last meeting, we need to have a very clear recommendation to council for what, you know, to put on the ballot. So that's, I think that's very clear to the committee, and I don't, I don't think there's any, there's any chance that that's not going to happen by the end of the meetings.
Right, thank you very much.
All right, is there any other member of the council? I just have a couple comments. I did have an opportunity to watch the last meeting, so I just had some comments. First of all, just to talk to, you know, some of the council members concerned about this committee, anytime a committee's formed with different appointments, there's going to be different personalities on the committee. Some people are there for certain reasons, other people have their own agendas, so that's not anything that can be, you know, discussed or changed, that's just certainly the way it is. But one thing I wanted to talk about in the committee is that, I know Clerk Hagog, you talked, yes, well, when I watched it, about all the different ways that the city has done outreach for, and you reiterated that this evening, you repeated what I heard when I listened to the committee meeting.
Just an abridged version of it, actually.
It was a shorter version of what you did at the committee meeting, but what struck me is that with all that outreach, we're still getting like five people, four people at the meetings, or, besides the people that were involved in the C VRA lawsuit at the first meeting, we had very few, like, people that were just coming for, you know, as residents being interested. And so it did strike me that we're doing all this outreach, but we're not, we're not reaching people to get them interested. So it shows me that there's something wrong with our message, and so I think that it may not be the method on how we're doing it, but the message is not connecting. And I think that was brought up by a couple of the members of the committee, that even though we have done this massive outreach, that they were talking to their neighbors and friends, which is what we tasked them to do, and they didn't even know about any of this, or even if they slightly heard about it, they didn't understand, you know, what was happening and why we were doing this and what, you know, what is going on. It's very confusing. So I think that it's not how we're doing it, but how we're messaging it, that I really think we need to look at. One of the members came up with, I heard on the recording, a very legitimate suggestion, which was kind of poo-pooed in the meeting, but when you're at the senior center, many aren't going online to take that survey, it's a little confusing to get on and this and that, so why don't you put paper copies at the senior center? And you have really, you know, an audience there of people that vote and that would be very interested, but that wasn't, wasn't, you know, taken. And I thought, that is a great, you know, example of how we can really proactively go out there and do that. Another member talked about how she went out to National Night Out, and she found that to be a great way to talk to people, because this is something where you actually need to talk to people, to really outreach in the community. So those were just different ways, and then there was another example where the city supplied the committee with a list of nonprofits, and one of the members said, you know, some of these aren't even in town, this list, there's no contact people, there's no, you know, how are we going to outreach? So a lot of them, we have to proactively outreach in order to maybe, you know, giving a presentation at the Kiwanis or doing something like that. And then I was really not pleased with the fact that we don't have a booth at the Arts and Wine Festival to talk about this. One member said, yes, I volunteered for the whole day Saturday, but, you know, Sunday, but, oh, you, nobody volunteered, so maybe you can stand in another booth, you know, and talk about it, and that's just not good enough in terms of us trying to outreach, because the Arts and Wine Festival is a perfect way to talk to people. So I'm thinking that the way we're outreach is not connecting, there are so many other ways to connect, because we're Santa Clara, we're very, we like to talk to people, we like to get involved in different things. So I'm wondering, I know there's a couple meetings left, but maybe we can, you know, look at things differently in terms of each, each district had someone that they appointed, they should be going out into the district to, you know, figure out ways to connect with people, not just throw something online, everybody's not online all the time. There's other ways to connect to people, you know, whether it's at a school or a PTA meeting or something, a church group, something like that to connect. So that was my comment after reading it. And in terms of the survey, I think at the end of the day, you're going to look at, I heard in the meeting that, I heard people could vote multiple times on their phones or whatever, so we just need to clear that up. At the end of the day, you look at the data and say, how many had names, how many were anonymous, and you can figure that out, you know, yourself, and you can weigh or not weigh. And at the end of the day, the committee's going to make a recommendation, and the council has final say as to, you know, what actually happens. But there's so many ways to outreach and communicate, that I know we have, still have a lot of time left, so, well, not much time, but time, so let's try to shake it up a little bit and figure out better ways, because if, I continue to see three, four, you know, five of the same people at all the meetings all the time, we're not doing a good job in terms of, of really, you know, outreach. Those are my comments. Okay. City clerk?
Yeah, so I mean, just, I certainly will take those comments and those ideas back to the committee at the next meeting, which is on the 21st. I think a lot of them, almost all the comments are pretty valid and accurate, and I think when, when the council went through the interview process to select the committee members, I think one of the primary criterias for selecting them was who was going to be creative in how they do outreach. And some of them have been extremely creative, as you suggested, like going to National Night Out, that was a great, you know, report from that committee member and how she went out and solicited input from talking to people face to face. So I will communicate that back to the committee members, that they need to find those creative ways, which is the reason why they were selected to be on the committee, to be able to go out. The listening sessions are a means for that, as again, the attendance for those is quite low. And the survey, again, without over-indexing on the statistical validity of the survey, where kind of the anonymous responses, it's just another avenue for getting that feedback and that input. So at the end of the day, the committee will make a recommendation for what they think is right for the city and what they think will pass, and then the council has the final say in what goes on the ballot, and that's just how the committee was set up, and that's what we're going to go with.
Okay, thank you. Any Councilmember Davis, you have more comments? Mayhan, Vice Mayor Mayhan, Kathy Watanabe? No? Okay, any member of the public want to speak, please come forward. I don't have any, we have no, any cards, no. Good evening.
Good evening, council members. I am on the Charter Review Committee. These comments are only my own. I do want to say that the Charter Review Committee asked if they had a budget, and they were told they had no budget, which means there was no money to do daycare, to provide food at the meetings. Subsequently, they did find a way to, to find food at the meetings. There's no budget for how to do Facebook boosts to get outreach to more people. So given that there was no budget, I would love to see some daycare and some more publicity for this, but it wasn't available. And, and I did ask the demographer, Gobalay, how many, whether 5,000 respondents to the survey would constitute a significantly statistically significant mandate, and she said it would not. So we can do a lot of outreach, and if we're basing everything on the, this survey, the survey was not written in a way that would provide a mandate. So it's, it's some sort of, I mean, you really can't trust it for anything if it's not statistically significant. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Anthony Becker, resident of Santa Clara. Going back to about what committee member, well, current council just said about what committee member Jane would have said, the chair of the committee, he never once said about seven districts, and I've been listening to all those meetings, so that's just to be confirming on that. Going back to the beginning of this whole committee, I believe that this committee has been a waste of our time. The ballot measure is a waste of our time, because the C V R A lawsuit told us that what we did wrong. Once again, we keep digging ourselves a hole even deeper and deeper. But that's besides the fact. When we get down to this and all these little, the, the survey that I did, I put my name on it. Seems like a lot of people continue to put their name, not continue to put their names on it, just like a blog I know of the city of Santa Clara that has currently, that people like to insult people without putting their names. So I see this as a way of diluting a real pulse of what people are feeling. I still think that six districts is the best solution, and it doesn't dilute the vote. It gives more, I mean, we have two council members that were just elected recently that really kind of show what democracy is in a small district. So it's, going back to, how do you outreach more to people? I say is you start mailing out questionnaires to people. Can you really put a price on democracy, especially if we keep appealing this C V R A lawsuit? At the same time, this, this survey that could be sent out to the residents, you can probably ask for their name, but black it out. Whenever I see other documents that are requested sometimes, I see, see things that are blacked out. So that could be a way of doing that, too. But basically, going into all of this, it's, I see this as an opportunity to get a six district option. I just don't think anything else would be sufficient. But if you really want to get outreach, I suggest you start putting rare Pokemon in these locations, because a lot of people will definitely show up.
Anyone else? All right. Is this just a note and file? Is there a motion to note and file? Motion to note and file on the second? Please register your vote. And that passes unanimously. Next item we have is declaring the vacancy for the position of elected Chief of Police and discussion on process for filling the vacancy by appointment or special election in March 2020. In fact, this was the only item that was supposed to be on the agenda tonight, but we added everything else, so I apologize, everyone. Who's taking this?
All right. So just a very brief presentation, which will reiterate a lot of what you have in your report to council. At the July 9th meeting, the, this council was informed by staff of the upcoming requirements, given that the, the council and the city were informed of former police chief Mike Sellers resignation, that he was declaring to resign, or informing the city that he was resigning on the first of this month, so just a few days ago. And so we're now here after his resignation. So he announced in June that he would retire, and September 1st has come and gone, so he has retired. And as per the city charter, section 703, that any vacancy in any elected office in the city, be it a council member, mayor, the city clerk, or the chief of police, would, would require the council to fill it by appointment with a four-fifths vote. So with a seven-member council that is six out of seven, would need to agree on the replacement. And if the council fails to appoint somebody within 30 days of the vacancy, then the city must put that to, to the voters at the next election. So there are two paths that the council can pursue for the, for filling the vacancy of chief of police. One is by appointment, and one is by taking it to the voters if an appointment is not made or there is no consensus with six out of seven votes from the council. So if the council decides to fill it by appointment, the, like I just mentioned, six out of seven votes are required, and that decision or that vote must be done before October 4th. So today, by the end of the meeting, the council should make a motion to declare the vacancy. So that is an action that needs to be done at the, you know, during this item. The council needs to declare the vacancy, and then the clock starts ticking 30 days from today. So by October 4th, if the council decides to fill the position, the vacancy by an appointment, they need to make that decision, you all need to make that decision by the, before the 4th. The eligibility requirements for candidates of the Office of Chief of Police, whether it's by appointment or by election, remains the same. So the, the candidate must be, must meet the qualification requirements for a candidate, any candidate for office of sheriff, but they also must be a qualified registered elector of the city. So that means they must be a resident and registered as an elector within the city. Why is that not advancing? Okay. And then as far as how the council decides to go through the process and taking a vote on any particular candidate, that is entirely up to the discretion of the council on the process that you want to choose. Clearly, there are, there is an existing process with regards to boards and commissions, so it is up to the council if they want to follow the same application process there. But if, if you were to follow that process, then the suggested timeline is what's listed on the slide there. So starting from tomorrow to the 16th, to, it would be open for applications, and then, and then again, from qualified applicants. So they must be, meet the, the requirements for office of sheriff and be a registered elector in the city of Santa Clara. And then on the 24th, on the, that the council would hold a special meeting at 5 o'clock to interview and appoint a candidate to fill the vacancy. If a, if the council comes to an agreement with six out of seven members of the council electing, at least six out of seven of the council electing to fill the vacancy by appointment, that chief of police will, will serve until November 2020. So they will serve the remainder of former Chief Sellers' term. If the council decides that they do not want to fill the vacancy by appointment, or they are unable to have at least six out of the seven members select one candidate, then the, then it is left up to the voters to decide, and that would happen at the next election, which is the March 3rd election. So March 3rd of 2020. And then this is the, the, the schedule that we would follow in the event that the candidate, you know, that you're not able to, or you choose not to appoint, fill the vacancy by appointment, and it goes to the election. So these dates are very important. So the council would need to make the determination by October 4th that they are not filling the vacancy by appointment, because the council needs to decide, or needs to adopt a resolution by the October 8th to get the item on the March 3rd ballot. So that is the deadline with the registrar of voters. It's October 8th. And then there are some additional dates there in terms of nomination filing requirements and deadlines there, with the election being on the 3rd. If the candidate, if we follow this path and a candidate is elected by the electors on March 3rd, they would still need to run for election once again in November of 2020, so just a few months later. So that is the nature of the timeline we are dealing with, and it is not ideal, but that is the reality. So today, the council should take an action to declare the vacancy, since this is the first scheduled meeting, council meeting, since the resignation has happened. And then I would appreciate if council would give some direction as to whether they would like to pursue filling the vacancy by appointment, or they want to just decide that they're not going to do that and go straight to an election. And then if they decide to go, if you decide to go by appointment, then if the timeline that we recommended is what you'll go with or something else.
But, Madam Mayor, just a brief?
Yes.
I would, I would suggest that you take the motion to declare the vacancy first, and then discuss, and any discussion would flow from that, that the, the office is vacant.
All right. Is there a motion to declare the vacancy?
So moved, second.
Motion second to declare the vacancy. Any discussion on that? Any discussion from the public on declaring the vacancy? Mary Grisel, you had something to say? Okay. All right. We have a motion and a second. Please register your vote on declaring the vacancy.
Nope, if I leave it.
Oh, and that passes six to zero. All right. Anything else, city attorney? All right, council.
The 30-day clock starts ticking now.
Tick, 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 tick. All right. Councilmember Davis, you have a comment?
Thank you, Mayor. Come on. Okay. So your second recommendation is to give you direction. So I would like to make a motion to move this to the election of March 3rd. And here are my concerns. This is an elected position, just as we are elected. And I want to remind everyone, on June 12th of 2018 meeting, that lasted until 1:30 a.m. after Councilmember Costura resigned, we were tasked to appoint that position. The city council interviewed nearly 20 very qualified candidates. And here is the important part of this. The council agreed to the process. It took six hours to interview the prospective city council members. At the end of interviewing, five qualified candidates received a majority of the council vote, but not the supermajority needed to be appointed. Two members claimed that none of the candidates were qualified and refused, I have the floor.
No, please.
I have the floor.
I know. You do. Thank you.
So none of the candidates were qualified and refused to appoint. Here are the names of the five people that were qualified. Saj Jane, Kevin Park, Dr. Mohammed Nadine, Hassan Hagog, and Eversley Forte. Residents of Santa Clara, I refuse to let history repeat itself again, especially when one of those council members is still on the dais. This was disrespectful to the candidates, the residents, the staff, and other council members. It clearly was a waste of everyone's time. This motion keeps in line the values of transparencies that our residents expect of this council. So I want to go right to an election and not deal with what we dealt with in the past. And that is what I have to say.
Motion second. Councilmember O'Neill, and then Vice Mayor Mahan.
Okay, first of all, I had a question, either, I don't know if it's for the city clerk or for our city attorney. I wasn't sure, I thought that when we addressed this exercise last year, that you said that we had to try to appoint? Is the language, because the language of the charter is not very precise, and so I wasn't sure if we had the legal option to not try to appoint, which I think was part of the reason why we did it the last time.
Well, I'll just read you the, the language of the charter. A vacancy in any elect, this is section 703, a vacancy in any elective office of the city, including mayor, city council, chief of police department, and city clerk, from whatever cause arising, shall be filled by appointment by the city council by a four-fifths vote of the remaining members. So, you know, it's not very well-written in terms of, because it's, in this case, it's kind of written for the purpose of, of dealing with a city council member vacancy, because it says remaining members. I mean, obviously, you have a full council. So there's multiple ways of interpreting, I don't think, you know, what's, what does it mean if you, if you don't think you're going to be able to get a four-fifths majority? In this case, a four-fifths majority is six out of seven. So if you, if you're sitting here now, thinking that you, that no matter how hard you try, you, you couldn't, then, you know, it, it obviously, the remainder of the section says, if you fail to do it, then, then you, then you shall forthwith call an election. So it's, it's really a question of whether or not you, you think you can, given the statements made by your fellow council members. It's, it's, there's no real, there's no real penalty for trying or not trying. It's, it's a purely political question of, of what the charter means.
Okay, thank you.
Vice Mayor Mahan, and then Councilmember Watanabe.
Thank you. Well, it would come as no surprise that I would support the motion, because I really do firmly believe that elected positions should be elected by the voters of Santa Clara, and that was the way I felt when we had a council member vacancy. I made no bones about it. I will not have my actions mischaracterized. I never said or intimated in any way that the candidates that we saw and interviewed were not qualified. I stood on the principle that the council member's position should be voted for by our voters, should be elected, because it's an elected position. I feel the same on the chief of police. It should be elected. We're not going to have 20 applicants. There's probably very few applicants that could qualify, because there are certain qualifications that the chief of police has to meet even on an election. So it wouldn't be a six-hour meeting. It wouldn't be anything like the council member vacancy meeting that we had, but I still feel very strongly that elected positions should be elected by the people. So for that reason, I will support the motion, but I won't have my actions mischaracterized. I really take issue with that.
Councilmember Watanabe, then Councilmember Chahal.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm glad we have everything on video.
Yes.
It's important for us to remember what happened last year, because it really wasn't that long ago. We wasted over six hours because certain members of our council weren't honest about the process. We wasted the time of the city staff, the candidates, their families, and friends and the public. And I don't want to go through that again. I don't want anybody to go through it again. It's irresponsible. There's still one council member present who did not sincerely and honestly participate in the process, so I don't think we can take a chance and waste people's time. It's better for us to let the voters decide. We know that there are good candidates interested. In fact, one of them got over 49% of the vote, and I think we can trust the voters to make a good choice. The city has explored changing the charter of its elected police chief in the past, and the people have continually said that they want to elect their police chief. We would be doing our residents a disservice by not allowing them this opportunity to elect their police chief. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Chahal.
With all due respect to my fellow council members, like, we can't go back into the history and point out other council members for this thing. I'm just trying to be, let's be civil, and whatever happened in the past is gone in the past. We are trying to move forward. It's not going to help anybody pointing out what happened in the past, and those things have been discussed on the council meeting for a long, long time. So that's my first comment. I do have a question for city attorney. This is section 600.02, consolidation of elections. It reads, "Any special election may be consolidated with general municipal election, and any municipal election may be consolidated with any state..." municipal election may be consolidated with any state, county, or school district election held in the city or part thereof, in which case only one ballot need printed for such consolidated election." So my question is, I know if we have election in March, for sure we will have election in November. To avoid those two elections, can we consolidate this election from March to November as per this charter code?
Well, the, the other charter provision that I just read says you have to forthwith call an election, so you can't, you can't leave the office vacant if there's an election date that's, that's available to have the election.
So that supersedes this charter, basically?
Well, the, the one, the one that you just read doesn't really even apply.
Thank you.
Trying to understand the question, I don't understand the question.
Well, the question? I think.
His question, I don't understand.
I can, so there's a charter, section 600.02, which enables the city council to consolidate the election into a November election. So I was trying, instead of going for election two times for the same position, if the city council can consolidate that March election into November itself, so that they don't have to go for two-time elections.
Isn't that include if we called a special election, but we didn't, we're not calling a special election?
Yeah, you are, you in fact, you are in fact calling a special election, and you are consolidating it with the, with the state election date in March, that's what's, that's what's happening.
But we can't consolidate a state election with a November general election.
Well, you can't delay the, the forthwith language takes precedence.
Well, forthwith could even mean a special election sooner than March.
I suppose, I suppose, if you wanted to spend that money.
Could do it in November, December, it's just at a huge cost to us, but.
We've never interpreted it that way before.
Which we probably wouldn't do that, but forthwith means forthwith, so.
Right, I mean, you want to, you want to give the public a chance to know who the candidates are, and, and run through the election in a normal way.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, Councilmember O'Neil?
The point of order, Councilmember Chahal, were you reading from the, that last, when you referenced section 600, is that the Santa Clara Charter or the Elections Code?
That's the Santa Clara Charter, right.
Any other comments from the council? Seeing none, let's go to the public. Any comments from the public? City Assistant City Clerk, do you have any speaker cards? If not, please come forward. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilman. My name is Grant McCauley, and I'm a member of the Chiefs Advisory Committee. This has been a subject that we've talked about, and we believe that there is a qualified candidate that you could appoint now, because even if we do wait for the election to come up in March, that's seven months from now, and the police department needs a good, strong leader. If you take a look at Dan Winter, he's basically has been doing this job, he is qualified, he's more than qualified. He's an attorney, he's been all through the ranks, his public service work, his community service work, and I believe that Dan is qualified. What I'm concerned about is having two elections next year, that means that the entire year of 2020 is a campaign year, and it's a unnecessary expense for the city, it's a unnecessary expense and time demand for the candidates. So I see is if we could appoint Dan to be the police chief, the acting police chief, until at least March, and then if we have the March election, then not being, asking him to run again in November. I just think that it's, it's too expensive, it's too time-demanding to go through all of that through a whole year, when he could be running a police department that we all know has already been ranked as one of the best in the safest city in the country.
Thank you, Mr. McCauley, thank you. Please come forward. Good evening.
Good evening. I too would like to make the recommendation to appoint chief or assistant chief Dan Winters as the interim until November for the next election. I just checked figures, and the least amount for a special election is like ninety-eight thousand dollars, and that was in Milpitas. And I think you can't look to the past, two of the council members are gone when this, all this reckless came up, and we have, I, I think the city council has an obligation to do the best for the citizens. And I'm, I'm, I love our police, I love every one of them, and I'm not saying Dan Winters over somebody else, so to speak, except that he has the experience, he's been the assistant chief, and he's got the experience as chief, assistant chief, so it would be a shoe-in for him to just continue on until the election. And as far as giving, if you think that this might give advantage to one as opposed to the other, that's also ludicrous, because if you want the job, if you want the job bad enough, you are going to be able to go out and outreach and talk to the public, whoever you are, and make your case for being the chief. And he is, whoever is in the interim is going to have to show to the public that he is a good chief, and that's, this is a good way to check him out.
Thank you. Ms. Griswold, anyone else? Good evening.
Hi, Anthony Becker, resident of Santa Clara. I do agree with all of you that it should go to an election, although I do believe in secession also in the meantime, I mean, we do need an acting police chief that's named. And I believe Dan Winters is that guy. I think also of coming down to elections, I've ran in two elections, it is a lot of work, and if you put two elections in the same year, I mean, you're, you're asking for punishment, and I suggest you get new shoes, Dan, it's a lot of work. But I think, in all honesty, we have, you know, Pat Nicolai here, who's also another great qualified candidate, and I think it just go to an election, have the voters decide it, but I like what Commissioner, yeah, Councilmember Chahal was saying, is that this is two elections, it's going to be quite expensive, and I also agree, you know, with Mayor Gilmore, what she said was, oh, can we do it sooner, but then that's a lot more cost, and then the city attorney said that doesn't also give enough time for somebody to campaign. So we're in quite a little dilemma here, and I really think, though, that once we, all said and done, we should just put this on the ballot and find out what we can do is naming him acting police chief until that time. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, council.
Can I ask a question?
Councilmember O'Neil.
Sure. So, in, in picking up on what Mr. Becker just said, I don't, the council doesn't have the ability to just appoint an interim, right? You either appoint to the, because the acting chief, excuse me, the assistant chief, the assistant chief fulfills the duties of the police chief in the police chief's absence, so there's not like another category that we could create.
Right, our charter does not have any such thing as an acting police chief. So what happens is, under the charter, if, if the, if the office remains, it's an elected office, if it remains vacant, Dan Winter remains the assistant chief, and in fact, he is effectively in charge of the police department under the supervision of the city manager. So the, the one difference in, is, is that he's not elected as an independent office, as an independent office of the city, he is still in the position of assistant police chief. There's no, there's no, there's no concept in our charter for something called an acting police chief.
Okay, just to have another question, because I think, I want to make sure that the residents that are watching the meeting, because it was also the suggestion, if we had an election in March, can't we just have that be the election? So that, you know, the election in March is for the end of this term, it cannot be applied to a term that would begin.
I don't see how under our charter we can do that.
I just want to make sure that the public understands.
I mean, the charter clearly says it's, it's, it's a, it's a four-year term, and it clearly lays out that when you have the election, you're just filling the remainder of the term. I, you know, I realize that from a practical standpoint, it makes a lot of sense to only have one election in a situation like this, but unfortunately, that's the way our charter is worded.
All right, so it's kind of an unavoidable, just so the public understands that we can't afford that.
And the charter is enacted by the people, and the council really can't change it. So that's just the situation we're in. I did have this discussion with the police chief, and, you know, he still wanted to have his, you know, with Mike Sellers, and he still wanted to resign, and the timing that he, that he decided to, knowing that this would probably be the, the consequence. So that's just, that's just how the cookie crumbles in this particular situation.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. I, I can count, so, and I do use history as a guide, and I think we should always use history as a guide when it comes to these situations, so I'll support the motion on the floor. Councilmember O'Neil, you have some comments?
I'll just make one last comment. I also can count, I mean, I would have liked to have done anything possible to avoid putting the public through two elections, but once again, here, and also, and I had a feeling I wanted to hear what Vice Mayor Mahan was going to say, because I didn't know how, if she regarded the chief of police position differently than the council position, but hearing what she has to say tonight, I don't see how we would ever get to a, the threshold required. So, like I said, I'd love to save the candidates and the public, the issue of going through two elections, but I, I don't see a way there.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. Please register your vote. And that passes unanimously. Okay, next item on the agenda, reports of members and special committees. Seeing none, we'll go on to city manager, oh. That's coming up. That's under the city manager executive director report.
I'm going to make three announcements before we move on to the informational item. I just want to remind the council that tomorrow, we're meeting at the Central Park Library for our governance study session. It's an opportunity to have a six-month-plus check-in on where we're at with the earlier discussion that we had at the study session. I also just want to acknowledge publicly that the council direction that was provided at last week's meeting, to bring back the park fees, the amendment language, on September 24th, I did send the council an email, and I want to make sure it's in the record here, that in order to legally conduct all the noticing, we need to bring that item back on October 8th. So we're not going to bring it on the 24th, it will come back on the 8th, so that we can do all of the required noticing. And I have really good news, next Tuesday, yes, I know, it feels, I'm so excited, next Tuesday, we are going to be presenting a beta website, the beta website for the city, we finally are getting near, ready to go and launch. We'll preview it here at the city council, as well as some of the outreach plans, we hope to show, have an opportunity to show the council a quick video that we're going to be pushing out to promote our residents, as well as any website users, to give us feedback in terms of the beta testing, and we'll, over the next week, we'll, we'll put out the data in terms of when we will go out with the beta testing and post it online. So stay tuned for our next meeting, because we're really excited to bring it forward to council finally. So Craig, I bring, I'll invite you up for, just, or Mike, for an overview of the informational memo. Would the council like a brief summary of the memo?
Yes, thank you very much.
Is that, would that be helpful? Okay.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, Mike Lued, Assistant Director of Public Works. Happy to be here. So as the city manager indicated, this item pertains to High Speed Rail project, and the High Speed Rail Authority's recent announcement of their staff-recommended preferred alternative. So if you recall, in February of 2019, High Speed Rail staff was here and gave a presentation to the council on their project. The council had questions regarding, and comments regarding funding, connectivity to other transit systems, and potential impacts to Santa Clara. Since then, High Speed Rail has progressed the project, and has, has had a lot more community outreach, and some within our city as well. So in July of 2019, the High Speed Rail staff released their staff-recommended preferred alternative. City staff here reviewed the preferred alternatives, and noted, and as noted in our staff report, the, so High Speed Rail's alternative is projected to have the least impact to our city. So we're very happy about that, and wanted to give High Speed Rail staff the opportunity to, to be here tonight. They did reach out to us regarding, hopefully, a formal comment letter from our city with regards to the project, and we have the intention of sending a letter of support for their preferred alternative, for the reasons I stated earlier. This is important, as on September 17th, the High Speed Rail Authority Board will be discussing their staff's preferred alternative, and will make a recommendation, ideally make a recommendation to move that forward. And of course, there's more process, environmental process that will proceed after that. High Speed Rail staff is present at this meeting, and I'd like to introduce Dave Spock, who's, who had been patiently sitting in the audience.
Yes, thank you for your patience.
Just in case there are questions that the council has regarding the staff report. Thank you.
Thank you. So council, since we have representation here, is there questions? Come on, council, he was here all night long. Councilmember Watanabe.
Yes. Yes, thank you. Yes, I, I know this has been a long process, and I'm glad that, and I really appreciate all the outreach that's, that's been done, and there was actually a presentation here in the city of Santa Clara on National Night Out, and so I don't know what kind of a turnout there was, but it was at Wilcox High School. But based on the fact that the city is preparing a letter with, with its preferred recommendation, is it going to come back to the local policy advisory committee at all at?
The preferred alternative? No.
Yes.
No, there, the, between now and September 17th, this is pretty much it, we have a, we have a date with the County Board of Supervisors, and then we're, we're in the glide path. So depending upon the date that the city furnishes a letter to the authority board, we'll, we'll get it in the record, but again, it, it's a timing issue. We'll certainly acknowledge the receipt of the letter, and do appreciate the city council's effort to do so.
And then the preferred recommendation does take out the viaduct, as I recall?
Correct, in either the San Francisco-San Jose Project section, or the San Jose tumor.
Yeah, the San Francisco-San Jose, yes.
In either case, Santa Clara is in this overlap zone.
Right.
But in either case, the staff is recommending that the state advance as a preferred alternative the at-grade blended alternative, so there would not be a viaduct within the city limits.
Okay, that's all I have, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Any other council members? No, thank you so much for coming, we really appreciate it.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, appreciate your time.
Staying all the way to the end. Any, no other questions? Okay, is this a note and file?
And I misspoke, it's September 17th, when we're coming forward with the website.
Okay.
Next week.
Thank you. Is there a motion to note and file the report?
No.
Motion second to note and file? Here we go, please register your vote. And. So that passes unanimously, thank you very much. And is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion second to adjourn. And with that, our meeting's adjourned, thank you. Thank you.